This is crucial to advancing the police department and moving it forward. I appreciate the chief for bringing this forward.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Well, chief, anything?
No, sir.
All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Yeah, I say congratulations, chief.
Say a little word.
Now we're gonna go back to five A. Now we have the opening, the public hearing. The opening of the public hearing regarding our agenda before five A is approved, we actually have to open it up to public hearing. And so I am calling on any residents to come forward regarding uh our budget.
Do I need the motion, councilor?
Do I need the motion?
Yes.
I thought you have to go to an open hearing first.
Councilor.
Okay, councilor Ahmad.
I moved that the Duba Heights City Council opened a public hearing at six oh five P M. For the purpose of hearing comments or objections, if any. The proposed corporate fund budget for the city of Duba Heights for the fiscal year of twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six as outlined in five.
Second. Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussion? We have an open hearing. I would like to quickly ask uh Maggie to go through the changes that we've made. Need discuss those. Yeah, council, no. Oh, do we have to take the air vote?
Yeah, we have a motion on the table. Any discussion?
Hearing none, all in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Those oppose? The ayes have a motion carries. So now we're officially in our open, our our public hearing.
Counselor Chair, just wanna make sure, would you like us to go through the personnel page changes and then the budget changes or just the budget to begin with?
Well, let me, let me open them up.
Yeah.
They're all highlighted, the chains are all highlighted in yellow. Yeah, go ahead. Let's start with the personnel pages. Thank you for this, Bobby.
Thank you. So the first changes are gonna be on page two of the personnel pages in the twentieth district court. Uh Michelle Atkins requested to change the judge salaries back down to ninety one four four eight. As that is not determined by the city or by the uh committee on the la. The board. And then at the bottom, the deputy court clerk two, uh it dropped down to three. And then Deputy Court Clerk two, who just started, dropped on the increase by one uh due to the salary change. So Deputy Court Clerk two was at thirty nine four three five. There's three of them. And then there's one Deputy Court Clerk two at thirty five eight three nine. And then on page three, on the mayor's budget, the only change that we had in this bu- this budget is the chief of staff, uh increase to eighty five thousand per year request.
I I I wanted to ask a question on this and I'm sorry for interrupting. I know that our executive secretary, uh say no names because we don't, we're not allowed, which I don't know why, but um. Yeah, Mariana has told us not to mention it. So the execu- the executive secretary, isn't they, don't they get paid from D P W? Or no, I'm sorry.
They used to be or half ordinance, half uh mayor, but that changed, I think, last budget. So you can speak on that.
Um if you recall, the ordinance department uh got an additional full-time clerical position that used to work half for ordinance and half for police. Uh now she's fully working for the ordinance officer. So when that happened last fiscal year, um those clerical duties were assigned to her and the salary came fully from the mayor's budget.
I just want you to know, last year the budget was still fifty fifty. Well, this change had to have been done this year.
It it was uh mentioned in the budget hearing about the executive secretary is gonna be fully in the mayor's budget.
Okay, I missed that, missed that.
I had a question back on the deputy clerk twos.
Yes.
Uh one, you, three of them uh got an increase of almost five thousand where the other one only got an increase of uh eleven hundred.
So um previously there were four deputy court clerk twos at thirty nine four three five.
Mm-hmm.
However, one of them retired.
Okay.
And they hired a new hire and the new hire starts at the lower rate. That's why she split them.
Just wanna double check.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, any other council members?
Okay. The next uh change would be on page seven under H R. Uh director of human resources is gonna be eighty five thousand. Okay, now page eleven, police department. Uh there are two changes. There's gonna be a change to the captain up to two and a change to the sergeants up to eighteen for the employee counts.
Those um eighteen would include the two new sworn-in sergeants.
Yes. And then on page twelve for the fire department, the police chief, the fire chief has been matched to the police chief's salary. And then on page thirteen for building, the director of building engineering, his salary was increased to a hundred thousand.
Okay, I, for the building and safety, uh the part for the building department.
Yes.
I think there was an error on here if I'm not mistaken. I don't know if uh the building director talked to you regarding.
About.
Um.
Because I was not aware of anything outside of the council study session that we had during his department. I could coordinate with him figuring out exactly what kind of mistakes there was. Okay?
Thank you.
No problem. Now, uh page fourteen, ordinance, uh we changed from seven ordinance officers to eight ordinance officers, budgeted.
What page is that? Fourteen.
Yeah, page fourteen.
There was no changes on here.
Yeah, we, we didn't highlight that line item by accident. Uh ordinance officer, it used to be seven on the previous budget, proposed, now it's eight.
No, um then also, um Maggie, I got a question as chief also. I had a talk with the director a week ago um to streamline the services and everything. I just wanna know, like, why, why can't we have them or chief? Um why can't we get them to have lean access to lean instead of every time they gotta write a ticket, they gotta go back to the police department, go right there, then go back out on the road, which wastes about two hours for every single ordinance officer.
I'm not aware of that, but I can work with them to see if we can uh.
Yeah, whatever licensing and budget, cause that would save, that would keep them on.
You want to follow me?
From what I believe, it's it's also a training issue that you need to pass certain classes to have access to lean. Um I don't know if that's something that the ordinance officers can get, but from what I understand, only people with certain.
But they have.
Training.
They have access, the director has access to lean at the police department, but their tablets, anything on the road, they don't, cause they gotta physically write the ticket back at the police department. So every time they write a ticket and they gotta look up something, they gotta drive back to the police department.
So again, it's my understanding that the ordinance officers have never had access to lean. That's why the clerical staff used to work for half police, half ordinance, and now she's fully in ordinance, cause she also used to have access to lean. So she used to get all the information for that. So it's my understanding that there is a specific access type, but we can work with them to try to figure out.
I'd like to streamline the ordinance department to be digital, so that way our ordinance officers are more focused on the streets than spending half of the day back at the police department writing tickets or research and stuff when they should have access in their vehicles. So that would be, the inba- the investment would be worth itself, set up every three, four ordinance officers getting off the road to go back, meet the director there to do this.
Hang on one second, the director, hang on one second. I'm gonna let her finish, but if you wanna speak, please speak through there.
Alright, well, he's walking up there. The other change in that department was the director's salary from seventy eight thousand seven fifty to eighty five as requested by council. Page fourteen, yeah.
Yes, I don't.
Director, if you can just give us a scope of the process you talked to me about so they can all understand it.
Right. Right now, I'm the only one that has access to the secretary of state and that's how we run everybody, but they have to be in Michigan residents to get a hit on them. We don't have lean access because we're not part of the police department and only part of the police department has access to lean. So our guys can't get that unless we have access, become part of the police department. So until it happens, I'm doing all the tickets right now. They have to do it all through us secretary of state in Michigan. I have no outside hits and anything else. So that's gonna be a problem.
Man, I don't, I don't see why we can't merge them so they can have the resources. Honestly, you'll streamline.
This is completely different than personnel.
Well, I know, but it's part of the budget and I'd like to include funds for it to get it streamlined. I think it's important.
Yeah, but that would be more, that someone to me then, there'd be I T. I T would be merging them together.
Counselor Chair, I call this. Do you mean access to the lean system for the ordinance officers? I think that, that's security issues and that's, that was a lot of regulations.
Once again, we'd have to become part of the police department in order for that to happen. Our guys can't have the access unless they become part of the police department. That's why we had a secretary working for the records department in the police department and she did all our lean checks. Once she came over to our department, we lost that. So we had to get access to the secretary of state, so we had some type of access to run plates and people in order to write tickets. And I'm the only one that has access to that, so now I'm doing all that.
So what, what gives you, if I can make that clear, what gives you the ability to do it, but and and you're not part of the police department, but not another ordinance department?
The secretary of state has different rules than lean. They're not as stringent. But I had to have the mayor sign a letter. We had to go through the process, had to send them all the paperwork to the secretary of state. Then they approved me and now I'm the only one that has access, cause there's gotta be a secured location in our office, which my office is. So like I said, lean's different. Like I said, if they're lean certified and they're a part of the police department, they could do the stuff on the street, they can write tickets, they can run people, run plates. Right now, I'm the only one that has access to that and it's only through the sector state, which only means Michigan hits.
That, that's audited and it's criminal prosecutions.
Yeah, you have, we have to be careful for giving up just anybody I think that, I mean.
Right, no, no, but I mean, it's for their job. I'm not saying this is to the public. It's for the ordinance officer. Obviously, they can be trained and everything. I'm just saying that I'd like to allocate money to streamline it where, like Dearborn, for example, they go out to write your ticket, the ticket is written on the spot and printed instead of coming back to an office.
They can have the pads, iPads.
But they can't write tickets, you know? Like I said, I think because they work in the police department, they're part of the police department. That's why they have the access in Dearborn.
Why don't we look at, why don't we look and see what they do instead of reinventing the wheel?
Yeah.
And then, you know, coming back to the drawing table on this one.
Well, you said, I, I, the, the ordinance officers or their ticket writers are part of the police department. That's why they have the access.
Are you, I'm sorry, councilor. So are you saying they are police officers too?
No, they're, they're, they're not, but they're part of the police department. They get paid by the police department, which gives them the right to get the lean access. Lean is really sticky on who can have.
So basically, you're saying we need to merge the ordinance department with the police department in order to do so.
In order to get the lean access would probably be the only way.
So this is like a charter almost, uh.
No, no.
Yeah, because you said.
Counselor Chair, we, we can explore it. I, I, I see what you're saying. We can explore it and look into it. And I'll che- check with chief Hyder and then with the state and see what we can do to streamline it.
The officers right now, do they have to come back to the office or they can call you and?
Well, basically what they do is we have a sheet they fill out with the person they wanna run or the license plate they wanna run. I have to do it. Then we have a sheet or an online form we fill out with the case it goes to. I mean, it's a lot to do just to run somebody. And like I said, no one else has access to it. I do, so I have to do that on top of everything else. So anybody, any tickets they want written, like I said, we wrote two hundred violations last month and three quarters of those had to come through me, so they get the information for the ops number, data burners and stuff like that, so they can write their tickets.
I, I know, but the councilman's saying that every ordinance officer has to go back to the office to do so. I mean, do they do every single ticket or they do it at the end of the day?
What they do is some will do it in the morning.
Yeah.
Then they'll do their day and they have more stuff to come back and they bring it to me. And then what I do is give the information back to write their tickets. The tickets come back to the girl, she enters them, go over to the court.
Such a three S. I mean, I, I mean, we're trying to make it easy on you guys. So whatever, if you cannot come up with something, we'll all support, so.
Counselor Chair.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, you have someone that works in the office. Can't, can't they write the tickets? Can't the or- uh the ordinance officers present her with the violation? She writes the tickets and give them to you?
Yeah, you have, you have to have clearance from the secretary of state and it's gotta be a secured office. No one can come in and out of. That's why they do it in my office. My office door has to be closed every time I leave it. I gotta log off every time I leave my office. And I can't have somebody who's doing other stuff, running back and forth to court, you know, taking a chance for a door being left open. And then they come in, we, we get violated, then we have nothing.
Well, I'm, I'm saying, you know, instead of them spending their time, each officer writing the tickets in the morning or in the afternoon, just giving them to her.
She has so much other stuff to do with the court, doing the court docket and entering the tickets. She has no free time. I mean, like I said, she entered over two hundred tickets this past month on top of doing court Tuesdays and Thursdays. And she, she, and plus we get the monthly report. She has to do follow-ups on. She has no time.
How much time does it take away from an officer in a day doing that?
I, I couldn't give you a specific, like I said.
An hour, two hours?
Like Russ Ortman works on Fridays, so he comes in and does all the stuff on Fridays. The other guys come in, some do them in the morning, some do them all in the evening. It, it all depends when they have time. If they're, I mean, if they're busy and runs, you know, it could be two days before they get to them.
Counselor Chair, if I, if I was sponsored.
Yeah, what's like a let the councilmen.
I'm, I'm answering, trying to answer.
Yeah, that, that sounds like it's uh. Expeditions and it's uh jumping all over the, you got jumped to in so many different loops. No wonder we weren't writing tickets. It's hard enough to go through the process anyway.
But I mean, if you didn't write it right on the tablet and print it and enter it in on the spot, you could just move over to the street block over instead of having to go back to the department.
So, so just here, you want the o- the officer writing the, that saw and witnessed it, because when they come to court, what they put down in that ticket is very important to.
True, I agree.
And we need to have them, not some other person, other third party writing it up.
Right.
Needs that also, but maybe the tablet, like you mentioned, they can have, that can print it out. Uh there's some, we don't have it yet, but things that we can look at to streamline the process.
I'm sorry, can you clarify exactly what kind of tickets and like?
What, what? Well, they're municipal civil infractions.
Okay.
So they're for blight, uh you know, A band vehicles, uh you know, house in disrepair. I mean, they're.
Dog bites.
I mean, yeah, they're a long list of tickets.
So basically, if there's something with blight, to look up who's the owner, so you can write the ticket.
And that's the other thing too, is if it's an L L C.
Uh-huh.
I mean, that we, we have no own, we have owner information. If, but if it comes back to a person and they're, like I said, for us, if it's registered out of Maryland, we can't run anybody out of Maryland to the secretary of state out of our system we're using. So now we've got to take a little extra time. We have to go down to dispatch and have them try to run it for us and, I mean, I said, it's, we're getting it done. I mean, they're writing a ton of tickets, we're getting it done. It just takes a lot of my day, because like I said, I have to run everything that comes to me, so.
I mean, I guess you need to figure it out between you and the chief and we'll all support, whatever you guys need to do.
Hundred percent, yeah, so.
But since I have you uh up here, how many ordinance officer we had last year? Wasn't it six and then we added three?
Yeah, right.
Nine.
That's why.
So nine?
Yeah, but we're only showing eight. You know, it's supposed to be nine. I know you guys eliminated one and you're telling us you brought another one, but the reality is you didn't.
It was budgeted at seven and then we added one. I do understand that three were added. However, uh in order to have three ordinance officers, you have to have three vehicles plus outfitting uh all the ordinance officers.
But I, I, I appreciate you giving us like the tough on it.
Yeah.
The truth is, this body here, the legislative body, had the resolution for three more. So like, Tangus, you need the cars, you need this. We'll figure that out when that, when we cross that bridge.
So do you want to increase it back to nine total?
If that's what the resolution was, like, and I believe I told you guys at the last meeting, councilman wants to put a resolution forward. It was nine. You please leave it at nine?
I'll put that nine.
Counselor Chair, I, if, if I'm not mistaken, I believe one of the officers is funded by Tifa, right?
Yes. Part, part of the salary is through Tifa, yes.
Yeah. Well, that would, that's, you know, that's free, freedom to city, you know, to measure before.
Well, it's, it's obviously has to show under, under the ordinance department budget or?
Yeah, you still have to.
So to show here, the one who's getting paid by Tifa.
I believe so, that's in the appropriations from Tifa uh in the revenue section.
So that does not show over here?
It won't show on the personnel page, but in the budget, in the revenue section, it says appropriation from Tifa. Uh that total amount, within that total amount, there is that ordinance officer that's paid by Tifa.
So basically, we're paying seven over here right now, correct, for that, the one you have for us?
Be- based on this one, seven with nine would be eight.
In nine total, one is paid to Tifa, Tifa, so the, the budget, the, the fund balance from, from it, the general ledger is only paying eight.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
We currently have six ordinance officers at this point.
Six?
Six.
Total. Did we lose somebody?
No, we've always had six, it's, it's, when I was hired in.
Didn't, didn't we hire a young lady here?
We have not hired.
I, I went to it, I went to the store.
Yeah, we, we hired a female officer. It's seven now.
Okay.
Oh, because one is in the building department also.
No, but he hasn't started in the building department.
Yes, he has.
Oh, yeah, we do have seven. I'm sorry, it's my, we have seven. It's my, yes.
Okay.
I forgot he went over to the building, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, we'll talk about the uh streamlining directors. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've been letting you know that streamline.
I think a lot of it is, I think a lot of it is that we don't have enough licensing for lean certification to give them. The big, the big factor is we, we have to put a computer in their vehicles. Now that we've gotten new computers coming in and we've gotten new police cars coming in, I think we can streamline that and get them computers put in their car.
I mean, chief, we have so many decommissioned police vehicles.
Yeah, we're complaining right now. One of the vehicles, well, we can, we can amend and transfer those vehicles in police department to the ordinance department. They're already outfitted.
Yeah, we had to put computers in them and then, and then we could do that. The other part about what Dearborn has, Dearborn has handhelds. They have, they actually have under, in their possession. It's off of wifi. They work off wifi.
Right.
And we don't have that, but we do have something in place that we've never enforced. We don't have a parking enforcement in this city. We don't have it. But we do have something in our policy that allows our cadets to go out and, and do parking enforcement.
They've been saying that for over two years, you from garbage days.
Correct. That's something me and Lieutenant Paulus have been talking about. And it's a matter of getting them a bulletproof vest and uh getting them in a vehicle that's equipped with a computer and we're gonna put them out there.
Right.
But that's something that, it's there in place. We're doing, no one just acted on it. But it's huge, because we're getting complaints of garbage day.
Yeah.
Parking issues all the time. And another thing we do, our reserves here don't write tickets, which I thought was kinda strange. Why couldn't have our reserves write parking tickets? Our ordinance officers are allowed to write blight tickets and trash day, not trash day tickets, but other different things dealing with C O Os and so on. Why do we have reserves that are not allowed to do anything but knock on doors to make sure people are safe? They need to be trained on how to.
How can we change that?
We need to train them, get more licensing. I don't think it's a problem. It really isn't. You just get a lot of pushback from, from the people on the department with handing out this stuff. They're not M Co certified, they're not police officers, but sure we could work something out to give them a modified version of, of lean. Yeah.
But please look into the cars, the decommissioned police vehicles, cause I know they're short a car.
Yes.
And those cars are just sitting in the parking lot.
Cause I, that was one of the first things I talked about when I first, they'd been, me and him at a conversation about why aren't you guys out here writing parking tickets? And then that's when he told me, we don't even have a computer on our car. We don't even have lean. And I thought it was very, very odd that they're not given the equipment to go out here and do that type of enforcement.
Let's set up a meeting, get together one time and we'll discuss it and I, I think that's gonna be.
Let's go through the personnel groups, guys.
Thank you.
At least, thank you, chief.
So your new total for the ordinance officers is gonna be three ninety seven, eight hundred.
What was it last year?
Uh.
Cause it should just be the same thing as last year's, guys.
There were salary increases because of the um union contract, but it's a small change.
That was a bigger number.
Oh, but for the total, so yeah, the total for the department last year was five sixty nine, seven six five, which again, with the change for the forty four thousand, it'll be close, cause the five fifty one will also go up forty.
How do we go down?
No, this was last year without.
Last year was five sixty nine, this year is five thirty two.
This year is five fifty one plus the forty four thousand two hundred, so it's gonna end up being a similar number. I was just talking about the officers area specifically.
Thank you. And then the last change is on page nineteen, library. Uh Director McCape did uh state those changes during the budget study session for his department.
Thank you very much.
But didn't we say all the directors to be at eighty five?
Yeah, they are.
Not, or it, we still shows eighty two, doesn't it show something?
Um what depart- what department?
The library. Library. Still shows eighty two. Right?
Yes.
Yeah, I've seen it, I've seen it right here.
Not really highlighted, but I don't know.
There was a director last week that I asked you to.
It was emergency manager.
Okay, and you updated it?
That's in the page twenty and twenty one of them. Page twenty one and twenty two are the new ba- pages. One is for engineering and one is for emergency manager. But I'll change, I'll make sure to make, make the change for the library director right now. Is there any other questions regarding the personnel pages?
Sorry, there's two new ones at the end, which are for the city engineer and the emergency manager, which you asked to separate.
Um, wait, let me see the city engineer.
Yeah, the city engineer here were just uh.
So now where are we, are we doing a different department for the engineer?
Yeah, that was requested during the meeting.
Yeah, I know, but do we need to do it? I mean, is it just?
No, because the building department requested the engineer to be.
No, no, I understand, but I know it's part of the building department, do we need to do something like a motion or or change amendments or any of the?
Not to my knowledge.
No?
Not to my knowledge. I mean, you guys are gonna be approving the budget as a whole, so.
But I mean, are we creating a new department?
Yeah, cause this is the department.
In the charter, the engineering department is already its own separate entity, so it's not like you're creating a new department. The city engineer has always been isolated. If you wanna get a legal opinion on that, we can, but we don't believe you need a motion to create a department.
Regardless, I mean, we're gonna prove the money as an engineer, if we have to create an ordinance for it, we can talk with.
Yeah, can you double check on, just to make sure we're, you know, following the right policy and procedure?
Okay, so moving on to the budget changes. Uh page one, there are three changes, we have the birth and death certificates, we dropped it to seven thousand dollars.
Can you pull the mic out? Thank you.
I know you hate when I do that. Uh so for page one, we have birth and death certificates, we dropped that to seven thousand. And then we added state grants and MDHHS grant, which Mariana can talk more about, exactly what those grants are.
Again, this are grants that have been approved and uh we're getting the reimbursement for it, so this is the revenues for those. They'll they'll offset the expenditures below.
I think uh we missed a couple. Sorry.
So, just to give you a heads up, there are two of them that were discussed during the meeting, however, I sent an email regarding those about revenues not being posted and why they didn't match. That was the interest on investments and they.
No, we have the first one.
The business license.
There, no, we have line four sixty five, renter property.
Rental property?
Yeah, I think we're supposed to take that to seventy, seventy eight, I think.
I did not have any notes regarding rental property registration.
In my notes, we're supposed to take it down from twenty thousand seventy eight hundred.
Are you sh- That wasn't discussed. I don't think that was. That was part of the building department revenues. The revenues that we discussed were uh related to the clerk's office.
Yeah, George has another, already done.
Yeah, okay.
And then uh.
For rental property registration, do you want to take it down to what amount?
Seventy eight hundred. And then we have the animal licenses, we took it down to fifteen.
So, Council Chair, I just wanna bring up that, again, the historical trend has been higher and the budget is really tight right now, uh with the two changes that we have, we only have about forty thousand left in the fund balance, so if we do drop revenues, it will make the budget potentially be in the opposite, depending on how much is dropped. It seems that the trend is around twenty thousand dollars that we've been generating in revenue, so if we could at least make it fifteen thousand and be conservative that way, but dropping it a full ten thousand dollars seems.
At least you guys have an updated number till like, till today's date or maybe current date. I know, that's uh almost like over a month ago.
I can show you right now, um.
What is this for, by the way?
Rental property registration.
So it's still eleven thousand four hundred, uh but again, some things haven't been posted since.
So you think you're expecting nine thousand in the next six weeks?
Again, potentially, if you wanna be conservative, we could do fifteen thousand, but again, in the past, it's been.
Conservative would be going to eight thousand, you you're not even at ten thousand.
We are at eleven thousand already, and in the historical years, we've been hitting nineteen thousand.
I mean, that's, I mean, I'm okay with, I'm okay with fifteen. Fifteen.
Yes.
That's animal, right now, this is the registration.
And then which other one did you have?
Uh li- animal licenses, line four eighty four.
Yeah.
I think we took, we took that one down to fifteen too as well. Do we have an updated uh number on that one?
They're at four thousand, sorry, they're at four thousand three hundred and thirty eight.
Right now?
Yep.
Yeah. No, yeah, we're up.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's fifteen thousand six hundred and sixty two, I was feeling the wrong, it's the uncollected revenue, the four thousand.
Okay, so um, are you guys okay taking it to seventeen five, I guess?
Okay.
For the animal licenses, okay, seventeen five.
I do apologize, I don't know why I didn't have the, that note down.
Happens. Okay. Okay, so birth certificate.
And then there were two of them that we discussed during the meeting, but then I sent an email out regarding the interest on uh investments as well as the business licenses. Uh there was an issue with the systems not posting revenues, so they actually are gonna hit the mark.
Are are these on these pages?
Uh they would be business license. That would be paying four five seven.
Four five seven, line four five seven?
Uh one zero one zero 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 four five seven point zero zero zero.
Business licenses, okay.
Yep, uh it's at twenty seven thousand now, previously you got, you requested it to be, I forgot exactly the request, but we did not make that change, given that there was unposted revenue.
Okay, so we can make that change now then? Since.
The, what I'm trying to tell you is, we, it's well over the our actual, like estimate.
I understand, so you need, we need to take it up.
So we budgeted twenty thousand dollars in revenues and we've already hit thirty thousand eight hundred and fifteen in business licenses. But yeah, during the budget hearings, it was requested to drop it, but the postings have now been posted.
Now, can we increase?
No, we can increase it then.
If you want to increase it, we can increase it.
Since we got two months to go, why don't you increase it to forty, to forty thousand?
No.
Thirty would be conservative.
Yeah, I mean, right now, we're at, you said twenty seven?
Yes. Oh, now we're at thirty, uh.
We are at thirty right now? It's at thirty one.
So we can increase those.
We're at thirty one right now?
Yeah.
We got two months to go. Okay, uh let's make it thirty five then.
We can keep it at thirty, I do wanna be conservative, just.
Okay, that's fine.
I don't want Council Chair killing me after the meeting. Um and then the interest on investments, that would be, hold on, second. They'll be on the second page when we go to that page, I'll let you know.
Okay.
So, is page one, is there any questions on page one?
So I know you highlighted the line five forty nine, can you remind me what, what we did there?
Yes, so Mariana can speak on that one.
So those were gra- grants that uh have been requested, but for some reason have not been budgeted. But they've already been approved grants, um we have contract agreements for them, so their, the revenue is now showing to offset the expenses that we're gonna have.
And they were approved, you said, huh?
Correct.
So page one, uh did you send us those grants?
Yeah, the the council has approved them. If you want, they can find the motions for them. In the expense account, it specifically details which grants it is, the expense at your account, so you can go through a specific.
At least just send us approval that this one was approved, so we'll know which one we're talking about, and link it to the line item.
Yeah, again, and the expense, there's a bigger breakdown, so it'll be easier for you to understand.
Sounds good, thank you.
Any questions on page one? Okay, moving on to page two. We added a uh grant revenue for fire, fire gear. Um that is, that revenue is gonna be offset by an expense, so it balances each other out in the.
I'm sorry, which line item?
Uh one zero one zero 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 six three five point zero zero zero, the first one highlighted on the sheet.
Okay.
Um, so that revenue is gonna be offset by an expense that is in the fire department.
Why are we getting all these uh updated revenues?
So as Mariana discussed in the previous meetings, the grants were not included um in the budget uh mistakenly by Shannon, so we, sorry, what we use, Council Chair?
That was done intentionally, because we asked her not to do that.
Well, these are.
These are approved.
They are approved.
Approved.
They're, they're gonna be expended this year.
Yeah, yeah, I understand. We would just ask for all the grants not approved, not to be included.
Mariana has a very detailed spreadsheet, she was concerned at the level of detail that would make your head spin. So she wanted to make it a little bit more easier to understand as to which grants cover which expenses. It makes my head spin, that's why I was trying to work with her on making it a lot simpler.
Okay.
Um and then in the bottom, one zero one zero 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 six seven one point zero 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 senior trips. We dropped that down to forty thousand based on your request.
Correct.
And then.
Think you missed one though.
The interest on investments is the one that uh I sent an email about, that the revenues weren't being posted.
Uh huh.
Um we already, through March thirty first, it's two hundred thousand, and that does not include A- April interest, so we are gonna hit the two hundred fifty thousand.
Okay.
I gotta, I gotta, so line, the Council Chair, if we move to six seven three, we did request to be dropped to one seventy five, by saying he got the numbers now and it's at two hundred. So it should be hitting two fifty by, by this.
Because we don't have April, May, and June posted. So that's three, that's a quarter of the year, so if you look at a quarter of two hundred, you're looking at fifty thousand, that hits two hundred fifty thousand.
You pull it up for me?
On the screen. Second, second to last column is what we're currently at.
What's the exact number? Thank you. I got a question for you.
Yes.
I wanna go back to ordinance.
Yes.
Kevin. Liz.
Okay.
Rob.
Okay.
Rose, Ross, Floyd.
I mean, there's seven.
Hang on, hang on, please for a second, I don't, I'm not here to argue with you. There's six, there's six full-time employees.
But he's budgeted for seven.
One part two.
We, we, we were supposedly, we, we're supposed to be at nine.
For the year, there was budgeted for seven, given the restriction on the funds. This upcoming year, we have, we've made a more balanced budget, so you can afford the nine.
I'm so sorry, Lee just got promoted, so yes, a vacancy recently.
Who just got promoted?
The director. He probably retired, that's right.
Sorry, yeah, I'm like, why?
I am not into this staffing department, I'm the, I'm the comptroller department.
Okay, let's have the effects, please.
Okay.
I wanna make sure that, what, you know, we.
Forgot yourselves.
They're trying to keep you.
Thank you.
No problem, thank you, thank you, Mariana. Um and then, uh we have one zero one zero 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 six seven six point one zero zero, this is the Safe Streets for All and Safe Route to School match uh for, that local streets will be reimbursing general fund for.
It'll be what?
Local streets will be reimbursing general fund for that's the match for the Safe Streets for All and Safe Route to School.
Okay, thank you, yeah. That's one for like three hundred ninety thousand, we've been talking about it for like three years though.
Yes. And then, page three.
Before you move on, which one, which was the last one you were talking about, the foot note?
The Safe Streets for All and Safe Route to School, there is a match that the city much, must pay.
Okay, what about the six eighty two? Line six eighty two.
On second.
That's for the parks and recreation.
That wasn't, that wasn't a change at all.
Oh yeah, that wasn't.
That was already there in the previous budget.
Nothing changed?
No.
I guess we have our, here's suspending changes.
No, what it is, is that we weren't paid for.
They were suspended one year behind that the director had to catch up on. So we are expecting them, the revenues just haven't been hitting as best as they should, given that uh applications haven't been processed.
Okay.
Okay, so page three, we have appropriation from Pike Fund, that is the request to increase Pike Fund to three hundred thousand and we have to offset it by the revenue.
Wait, what about? Uh eight one eight Media Services. We lowered it from fifteen thousand to five thousand, and I believe that was for like the uh council.
That wasn't when, we're not at that page yet.
I think uh.
With down revenues.
We're on four. You're on four now?
I'm on three.
I'm on three, I'm on three as well.
So what's that counting?
Well, I, we had a new budget passed to you, like.
Yeah, page number changed between uh last time and this time. So you're not on council, you're on estimated revenues?
Yeah, so the page number sheet, that's gonna be off by a few, because we had to add a few extra pages.
Yeah, but we're off by six pages.
Yes, that's why I'm going page by page instead of referring to.
Okay, so now we're line uh six nine nine?
Yeah, six nine nine zero one one, that's the Pike Fund uh appropriation from Pike Fund to uh match the expenditure for three hundred thousand dollars. Any other questions for the revenues?
No.
Thank you.
Okay.
So City Council, the only change was a decrease to five thousand dollars for media services. Okay, the support, the salaries, we already spoke on, fringe benefits, they change based on salaries. Dues and memberships, which is eight zero two point zero zero zero, uh we changed to forty five hundred based on the recommendation by Michelle. And then court fees, eight zero four point zero zero zero. We dropped that to forty five to make up for twenty thousand and cap outlay uh from the request for, from Council Chair. Mayor's office, page six. Uh we increased the chief of staff salary to eighty five thousand, so that changed the salary line item and the fringe benefit line item. Elections, nothing changed, that's page seven. Uh page eight, general government, there are no changes on that one. Page nine, assessors' office. The only thing that we changed, we added was the commission, uh commission fees for uh the board overview, we added fifteen hundred. I believe they get paid seventy five dollars per meeting. Any questions so far? Page ten, corporate council, uh we did the budget for supplies at five hundred. The budget for contractual service, contractual services at seventy five thousand and the corporate council assistant at forty thousand.
What was that line, where it says seventy five, uh professional services? Uh eight one seven.
That we don't actually have any uh, anything amount, anything for that budgeted for.
Uh why I have here five thousand for some reason.
Five thousand?
Yeah.
What's under?
Eight one seven, line eight one seven.
For page ten?
Uh page ten, yeah, number, uh line eight one seven.
Eight one seven?
Mm hmm.
Yeah, that's the requested, but it, we didn't have it in the budgeted for. It's empty.
On mine is the page ten. I don't know, I don't know. What page is that? Yeah, we added five thousand here at. For contractual services. Yeah, professional services court. Well, professional service court pro. It went from, you spent four thousand, four thousand, you requested budget, seventy five thousand, you gave them zero, and we took up the five thousand dollars. And we did this at seven twelve P M, four nine twenty five. Good note. Thank you. Team secretary. Remember, professional services for. What was that for again? It was, it was Michelle, it was the court that asked.
So this is a corporation council's budget, um the professional services court pro, do you recall what that is, Mister Ferina?
No, I don't. There's nothing budgeted for, right?
They they requested a five thousand during your meeting. Um I know that originally the seventy five thousand was for all of the additional activities that he wanted to do with the juvenile court and different things like that.
Well, we we are pursuing with it. If if we have it, I would keep it.
But you spent four thousand dollars, do you not know what you spent it on?
Well, if you're saying we, if it's professional services, it'd be filed.
It was not spent.
The interpreter, was it the interpreter?
No, that's in the court's budget.
That's their budgets. We don't pay for that.
So again, this was for the additional professional services that we were gonna uh provide for the juvenile court and different um events for the community.
Something like that to work with some of the programs that were initiated.
Correct.
Okay, well, I mean, it wasn't added. If we need to bring it back, I'm sure we can.
So should we add it?
No.
No?
So page thirteen is where the next change is. Uh we had the commission fees dropped to eight thousand based on the projected activity. And the fringe benefits change, change for that amount based on the amount we would be paying out for commissions.
What page was this?
Page thirteen.
Give us a second to get to that, please. This we went from one thousand to eight thousand?
Yes, thank you. Next page, on page fourteen, we have the comptroller's budget. We dropped from four twenty five for contractual services to three fifty for contractual services.
And that was for Plant Moran Gap, correct?
Yes. Okay, I'm gonna talk about it now. Just uh regarding uh this budget, um I do know that we. Uh budgeted for one comptroller, one deputy comptroller, and one accountant. Uh when we are fully staffed, I do have a plan to bring to council possibly another employee. That will assist further and bring in majority of the work that Plant Moran's doing for day-to-day operations into the comptroller's department. I do wanna make sure that when we do have a comptroller, deputy comptroller, and accountant. I um assess their responsibilities and. I will be able to determine whether that fourth employee is needed or not needed, but I do believe it probably will be needed, given the amount of work. That we have in that department.
And I will cut the cost of Plant Moran Gap, right?
Uh it'll be about a quarter of the cost. So it's gonna be like about a quarter of the cost of what Plant Moran would be.
No, saying by doing so, we're gonna eliminate having Plant Moran.
Even more.
That's his question.
Yes, um but like I said, because I'm trying to be as fiscally responsible within the department. I don't wanna add an employee until we, I'm able to determine uh the tasks necessary between the comptroller, deputy comptroller, and accountant.
Do we play Plant Moran, any other contractual service line items?
No, now, I spoke with Plant Moran about this uh today. They do services for like water and sewer, library. However, however, technically, that is the responsibility of the comptroller department. However, uh we should be appropriating more funds from those like appropriations in the revenues. Based on the increase in cost. However, when we bring that back in house. The comptroller should, department should be in charge of doing the services that Plant Moran is providing on behalf of the other funds.
Thank you.
No problem. Oh no, but they're asking like, because they do services, are we gonna be appropriating funds?
No, my question is, I know here we have three hundred fifty thousand dollars. Have we given them anything else from any other contractual services that you are?
Yeah, we are.
We are, I know.
Benefits, but that's a subsidiary in a whole different uh area. We're not giving on the benefits and consulting is being paid out of H R and that's twenty five thousand four hundred per quarter. That is currently out for bid, um and we are hoping to find out the best option moving forward with that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I know. Just like all your business.
Are are we still on page fourteen? I'm sorry, before we move on, because I have here, for the salaries to change to one forty three and you have a one fifty, you know why?
Salaries?
Yeah. For the human resource department. The first line.
Oh, H R.
H R, yeah.
Sorry, I'm still on comptroller.
Yeah.
H R, uh the salaries for the uh H R director. We originally requested a hundred, it went back to some date, but then it went back up to eighty five.
The C personnel page. Yeah, I I had here like the change to be one forty three, but you have it one fifty. I just wanted to figure out.
So personnel page for whom? Oh, the older one.
So when we went through the H R budget, you had requested for that budget to go down to the seventy eight thousand where it originally was. Instead of the hundred that we had requested. So if we had made that deduction, it would have been at the one forty that you probably have in your numbers. But afterwards, when you decided to increase all of the directors to eighty five, we added the additional ten, so now it's at the one fifty.
Thank you.
Okay, because the salaries changed, we have a change in the print benefits to fourteen thousand two hundred fifty four dollars. And then contractual services, we dropped to one fifty. That is currently, it's a hundred thousand for the Plant Moran benefits in consulting and fifty thousand for. Uh labor negotiations, contractual services.
The contractual services going from one seventy to one fifty.
That's why I want fifty now. We changed it.
Then. We also said, oh, we're combining, okay.
Any other questions?
That's it, thank you.
So page sixteen, Board of Appeals. As only Board of Appeals, we did the commission fees increased by a thousand, which also increased the print benefits. Treasury's office budget, the page seventeen. Uh we have a change in the travel and education based on uh requests, down to four thousand.
Do we play Plant Moran to the Treasury Department as well?
Uh the tre- the Plant Moran provides services to treasury a lot, but we do not pay out of treasury.
So they don't, we don't have them for contractual services?
No, so the contractual services that treasury has. Um are for most, most of it is due to the tax notices and to tax mailings and things of that nature.
And the investment advisors are also coming out of contractual services there.
Thank you, no problem. The I T department, and I have no changes on that one for page eighteen. Page nineteen, building and maintenance, I do not have any changes for that department.
But get uh, get with the director, there's a change that said that you missed.
Well, if he wants a change, he didn't relay that information to myself, Mariana, so.
Ask me to get with him.
Or.
I, there is, did, there was some mistake in some paperwork and I talked and realized budget that they missed. Um if you can get with him, just double check.
Okay, I'll get with him.
Thank you, buddy.
I spend a lot of time with him each day and I did not. We were literally with him an hour before this. I'll make sure to bring it to his intention and let him know exactly what uh he's missing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Page twenty, we have police department, the salaries change based on the two extra sergeants and the one extra captain. The holiday pay changed to reflect closer to the amount that we would be paying, previously was at three hundred thousand. And then the print benefits change based on the increase in those two values. Page twenty one, emergency manager, we increased the salary from seventy five thousand to eighty five thousand. Fire department, we only increased the fire chief's salary to match the police chief's salary, which made. The salaries go up by about twenty three thousand and then fringe benefits up by a little bit. And then contractual services down uh eight one eight point zero zero zero. We increased that to two twenty, given the necessary repairs that the fire chief sees he's gonna need in the next fiscal year. Building and engineering, we have a lot of changes here. Um salaries, we removed the engineer out of the building uh department. And then we also increased the building director by a hundred to a hundred thousand. We decreased the part-time because the en- engineer part-time that we, the current part-time engineer we have. Is moving into the engineering department, and that changed the print benefits. The clothing line item was dropped to three thousand dollars and then contractual services was put at thirty five thousand.
Contractual services?
Eight one eight point zero zero zero. So page twenty four, ordinance. The salaries is gonna go up based on the nine ordinance officers, we will change that number, I believe it's five ninety seven. And some change, we will increase that amount. And then fringe benefits also increased based on the salary increase, um the extra employees. And then for four two six eight zero six, which is the contract we have with Michigan Humane Society. The contract is approximately one hundred fifteen thousand and we put one seventeen just to keep it over.
I think it's important, I I I respect and appreciate the uh Humane Society, but their numbers are gonna jump up drastically on us.
I was told by the previous director that the Michigan Humane Society, their services are not way better than any other. Shelter, but.
And and I wholeheartedly agree. The truth is.
I was told you won't be able to like help the wildlife and cats and. It's a cost the city might wanna discuss whether or not they wanna take that on. We can have a meeting with ordinance director regarding that contract.
Do we open up our own shelter? Be cheaper.
I wouldn't mind. I can have my mom run it. She loves cats. Six single cats. Lots of cats. All my clothes are here. Uh we are gonna move on to page twenty five, which is our D B W highway department. We increased overtime by fifty thousand. We made the clothing line item fourteen thousand one hundred fifty to match what we expressed with the new uniform. Uh agreement we have with the first. Fringe benefits increased based on overtime. Supplies uh was combined with materials and supplies to be thirty seven thousand. Uh street signs was increased to twenty thousand based on council's recommendation. And then the underground storage tank liability, we put three thousand dollars for that charge. And then all the way at the bottom, we have safe street, Safe Streets for All and Safe Route to Schools, uh we included those grants in this budget.
Are these grants too?
Those are the grants that were were correlated with the revenues and on page one.
So I'm sorry, going back to the two, two lines at the bottom, where's the money coming from?
The revenues, we just made that change in the revenues.
No, I understand, but where where the money coming from? Is it a grant or is it uh?
So it's a grant with a match that's coming from local, so our portion of the match is coming from local, uh and.
Why do we keep taking local money though?
It is a street project, it's it's a crossing for Beach Daily and the Action Plan for the roads.
Page twenty six, we have the engineering department, the new one. Basically, we have just the engineer at one twenty two four hundred. And then his part-time engineer at fifty thousand and then the print benefits is based on the salaries. Any questions so far? No changes to page twenty seven in the recreation department. No changes to page twenty eight? There isn't anything budgeted for page twenty nine for the golf course.
Well then, real quickly, are we on the planning commission?
No, we're on twenty nine.
Right now, we're on, we're on the planning commission right now.
You have your page.
I don't know, I'm sorry, I'm I'm looking at both, the ones that we did and then for my.
That's why I'm trying to slow down for you just so. I'm going, I know I'm going a little too fast for one, they they don't have any changes.
Like almost two hundred pages, so like, you know, we're gonna make sure we're doing it the right way.
No problem. So we're on page thirty right now, we have no changes in the planning committee.
Even though I think we uh.
I recall there was a change, I, it was a big small change, I think it might have just not been.
Yeah, yeah, supposed to go from twenty five hundred to forty. Forty five hundred because the N G uh Rex and what's her name, that match?
Forty five hundred for commission piece?
To forty five hundred, yeah. Because they're having more meanings.
I vaguely remembered and then we did do that for the zoning board of appeals, um but we didn't do that for the.
I just wanna go back quickly to golf course.
Yes, I figured you wanna talk about that, that's why I tried pausing, but then you switched to.
They're about to open and they're expecting the 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 parking lot to be paved, which is we're obligated to do because of the. Contract.
Yeah.
So like, we have no money in here, so like, what was you guys' plan?
I will say this, um.
Let me hear from Mariana, because this is more administrative here, this isn't like uh comptroller's thing.
Sorry, I did ask the city engineer about that today because I know he's been getting all the specs for getting that project done. Um I know originally we had budgeted eight hundred thousand two years ago before the construction renovations began and we had postponed that project. Um that money would have to come from fund balance because as you see, it's not.
You said eight hundred thousand?
Last time, we had budgeted two years ago, it was eight hundred thousand. Right now, it's looking more like a million and a half, but we haven't gone out for bids.
Hold on, for a parking lot resurface?
Correct.
Okay, do me a favor, when that goes out for bid, I want every single bid that comes through, I physically wanna see this. If you're telling me that parking lot cost a one point five million dollars, somebody's getting a kickback.
So again, even just the quarter that was presented through the schools was already half a million dollars. So it is the cost at the school and we are getting as well.
Curb, they're not just resurfacing, they're running a curb lift.
Again, we have, we haven't gone out for bids currently, so we'll see what the new numbers are.
Just, let's just go biz, let's go to the biz, let's not just uh jump into. I mean.
I know.
Look, but what I will say is here though, you're saying we're gonna have to go from fund balance. You just told me we only have forty thousand dollars left in our fund balance. So we wouldn't even be able to go to fund balance, so you have no way of paying for this, which we're contractually obligated to do. We won't even be able to go to fund balance, so you have no way of paying for this, which we're contractually obligated to do. And now you tell me, so you're telling me either way, we're using the fund balance to even balance out this budget because we're gonna be in a deficit. Yeah, so. I mean, this is a, you know, this is something like, you gotta really discuss, I don't know, maybe. Can I, can I provide, can I get contractor or subcontractors for the city to provide estimates for it, instead of it going out through engineering?
I mean, the bids themselves will be open to the public to.
Guys, we can't even go for bid, you have no money to pay for it. Just one point five million dollars is absurd. The councilman, but this this is a completely different discussion. Here we have zero dollars in the budget, so even if we went out for bid, like what's the point of going out for bid if you don't got the money in the in the this budgeting for it? Well, even if you did present the council, you don't have any money.
So again, council chair, during the last round of the golf course discussions. It was proposed to sell the golf course because it is more expensive to maintain it than to keep it. To the council and the council voted to maintain it as a golf course, so.
Recently, you guys asked?
No, when we did the original um lease to Anida. At that time, it was discussed and David Sabuda clearly stated that that the golf course is never gonna generate enough revenue to maintain itself.
Turn off, turn off, turn off, I I don't mean to cut you off, I don't mean to cut.
Again, golf courses are expensive, that's all I'm trying to get to, at the state in which our golf courses, we knew we had to.
For just for one second, I just wanna make a quick, please, nothing from the audience. I wanna make a hu- just a a a correction, cause you're saying things that never existed. Uh, you, we never were told, let's sell the golf course to Anida, we were never told, no, we were.
Not to Anida, we said when Anida left, we had proposed to sell the golf.
Ever, ever said, all we ever said was, please, no, please, please, hey guys, nothing from the audience. All all the mayor did was go out for bids, we came back and we had, you know. This presented to us, and only thing that was told to us, if we don't vote on this, your grass is gonna burn and this thing is gonna fall into shambles. That's what we were told, we were never ever told, hey, it's gonna cost you too much money, you should sell it.
I can go back to the budget hearing for Mr. Sabuda, but uh one hundred percent, we knew that there was gonna be costs associated with bringing the.
You guys, you guys did a bad job explaining it to the public and to the council. You must have had this conversation privately, cause we were never told.
Okay, again, we knew there were gonna be costs associated with this, a preliminary budget was created at the time. There was eight hundred thousand at the time that we had expected for the for the parking lot to be.
Instead of restricting it, you.
Everything that is spent is spent with approval from the council. So yes, everything was spent in salaries, everything was spent in operations. Um, that is, that is a situation that we're facing right now, you, the only option you have is to use fund balance.
But what's the fund balance you just told me?
Correct, there is no budget in the current revenues, there's a little bit left in the fund balance, uh but again. Eventually, hopefully, the the golf course will start generating revenue, it is a service that the residents.
They can't open if their parking lot's not done.
Correct, which is why this is an expense that we're gonna have to face soon. Um, I'm working out for bids, but um again. For the parking lot resurfacing, we're going out for bids for the parking lot resurfacing.
Guys, please, point of order, point of.
If we don't know the cost, we don't know.
Point of order, guys, let's move on.
Okay.
I just want you to know, for the record, you never once told the council, I know you guys love to throw the council, you guys approved it, you guys approved it. But let me tell you what you guys did, what you guys did. You guys failed to tell us coming out of the fund balance anytime you threw our account number on there, you guys constantly, just like when our, when our old director came up here and said. Oh, I had some extra money for my budget last year, no, you didn't.
Council chair, the the budget was coming out of the fund balance when all of these projects for the golf course were created.
No, it was coming out of ARPA funds.
No, it was not.
Yes, it was, yes, it was, you stand.
That was part of the fund balance, it was from the revenue loss in the fund balance, it's still the same thing. Once you approve the money to go into the fund balance, it's one thing. Again, you don't understand that when you move ARPA funds into the fund balance, they're one thing, they're no longer separated.
They didn't go to the, they didn't go to the fund balance, it went into the general ledger as as losses is what you said. It went to capital losses is what you, those were your words verbatim.
Correct, which your revenue losses is part of your fund balance, that's where all the money is located. And and again, I'm sorry that we're in a different situation that other communities.
Because I don't forget things, and so when you start acting like something else was said or happened, I said, Tony, no, that that didn't happen.
Council chair, you appropriated the money for revenue loss, we have motions approving that. You then appropriated money for the golf course to come out of fund balance.
Let me tell you what we.
From those revenue.
Let me tell, let me tell you what we did. You brought us somebody here and we paid them eighty thousand dollars to tell us. That what you need to do is, if you don't wanna have restricted money, put ten million dollars here. And then you could play around with the fourteen million dollars that are restricted that you have to use in a certain way. So when you, so so what I don't want you to do is, well, you guys approved, you, no, what the recommendation that you guys made. That yourself, the people that were brought on forward by the administration and the mayor was this, and and Tom Lenzel spoke about this. We specifically said, we can be able to use the money however we wanna use it if we put it here.
Which we did.
Okay, turn off, please, hang on.
Correct.
So what, you, what now you see like how you're spinning things, but you put in fund balance, you put in revenue losses, we didn't hear, this is what revenue losses, this is what fund balances. No, what, let me tell you, anytime you gave us something that we approved, you're right. You guys came back and threw in an account number, assuming it's coming from the general ledger, but really it was coming back from the fund balance. No, at the end, you guys were using fund balance money that we found out that there was no more money because our treasurer told us that. Never came from you guys, that that was a hidden secret.
Council chair, you get monthly reports from the treasurer and the controllers department. And again, yes, you did unrestrict the funds and then you provided salary increases and you knew negotiations for everybody where that money got allocated. So again, that's where your money.
Negotiation for one year is what we did, we give a one year. That 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 was done by a former HR director that also told police officers that if you can go four days on. And you work, I'm gonna give you four full days, any after day after day is considered overtime.
That is not accurate, I can give you the salary increases and all of the back back pay that we gave to all the police officers with regards. It's it's a lot more than that, council chair, but um again, regardless. The city has, the city has historically been in a deficit. The ARPA funds did balance that out due to the revenue loss for the years that we had that funding available. But historically, even before that, we were still at a deficit. And again, I shared with the council, David Sabuda's presentation where it showed the trend, we can create that again. But it is not something new, it is a situation that the city has historically been facing.
I'm gonna quote.
I'm sorry that ARPA funds have run out.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna quote you what David Sabuda said, Mariana, David, David Sabuda said, you guys are overspending. He didn't say the city has historically been in a deficit, he said, you guys are overspending. The management is overspending and asking the council to approve it.
And he showed that in a chart that showed the historical trend of how we were overspending.
No, he told us where we would be today, that's that's what he.
He did.
He did, he talked about where we would be in twenty twenty-five and that you guys would, you guys would deplete your fund balance. You guys also had a conversation with with Plant Moran and said you guys need to get a hold of things. And 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 it was not said to you guys one time in private meetings, it was said to you multiple times.
Correct.
You guys felt, you, it fell in death ears, nobody took control of it, management did not do that. I I I don't want you to keep blaming the council, Mariana.
I I'm not blaming the council, I'm just saying you have been notified of every expense that has happened.
Why hasn't the administration taken a a course? No, we have not, I have not been made, we've not been made, we don't know what what the what contracts were happened that were given out to any directors at the, in the beginning, we had no idea, they were hired in and. It was just used, it's not true. No, no, how about this, even the controller that got paid the one fifteen. It was Cindy or whatever, the the lady, that one of the controls, we had seven, Cindy. That pay raise was given to her without our approval, then it was added to the budget the following year. I said, she wasn't at one fifteen, and the mayor said, yeah, yeah, she was, you guys approved it in a closed session. I said, you can't make an approval in a closed session, you can't even talk about that in a closed session unless it was talked in here, and nothing like that was ever talked about.
So again, from what I recall.
I don't know when they're spending things, cutting down trees and then saying, here's the bill, that's another way of saying, uh so that the, I can give you a lot of examples where you guys got money and didn't come to the council.
I I don't believe that's accurate because we have to come to council for everything, but I understand your concern, council chair.
So false.
Alright, let's move on.
Let's move. I told myself I didn't wanna do this today, I didn't wanna do this, I just want to, please, nothing from the audience, Angela, please, I'm gonna have to ask you guys to leave if we continue that, please. Nothing from the audience, thank you.
Okay. Should we move on to page thirty?
Yes.
Yes.
I just want us to, for the record. This money here, that should have been put in a restricted fund, administration failed to put it in a restricted fund and that's why the golf course floors are not being, uh. Campaigns not being done, not on the council, you guys failed to put it in a restricted fund. That's your job. Continue, if you want us to micromanage you guys and making sure that things are being done the right way, then we should have done that, but you guys always wanted to have leeway. You wanted your leeway. Look what happens when we, when we didn't hold, we didn't put our.
Council chair, that's not how a budget works, last year, the eight hundred thousand was proposed to be put in the budget, it was declined.
Because you guys have a deficit.
Correct, so we're in the same situation again, so it's not budgeted right now, so it's not in the restricted restricted account because it's not budgeted.
We gave you a balanced budget and you still operated at a deficit.
Correct, and you know the reasons why, we've had multiple meetings about that.
No, we have not.
We've had at least four meetings about overtime, which is why we're over.
Whose whose fault is that, the council?
No, no, council chair, it's much more complicated than that. It's the salaries, it's the lack of being able to hire fast enough, it's the people that are off, it's the. We didn't liquidate people out, Mr. Sav.
Thank you very much, that's continuous, now we're on page. I'm just. We're now on cable. Go ahead.
Page thirty-one. Cable TV department, we changed the tech capital improvement to three hundred thousand dollars based on your vice council chair. To invest more in technology.
Thank you. Thank you. In cameras and things like that.
Yes. There have mo- been no changes to page thirty-two, public information. There have been no changes to page thirty-three for general government pension. And there have been no paid changes to page thirty-four, um, F three forty-five pension. Any questions on general fund?
Where are you now?
Thirty-five. Thirty-four and then we're moving on to thirty-five.
Uh, no, no changes. And now thirty-six?
Now we're gonna be, yeah, so thirty-five, no changes, thirty-six, no changes, that is a CDBG. Budget, it is actually gonna be approved in October, I believe, and then you'll get that budget from the CDBG director for.
Yeah.
That. Page thirty-seven, no changes.
Uh, so page thirty-eight, can you remind me what's that transfer to TIFAR again? There were funds.
Mariana can.
We're collecting or something.
Uh, this is to pay for the um Justice Center bond.
Yes. But but how come it's out of the building fund? Now building authority.
Um, I don't know that was budgeted before my time, but I believe it's because of the bond and because it is a building, a new building, it was created for that particular pro- purpose. Tifar pays the majority of it, we only pay sixty thousand of it.
Age thirty-nine, we are gonna be moving into major streets, this is gonna be the revenue for major streets, which is five million seven hundred one thousand, no changes. And then expenses, the the one change we have is for traffic services, which is the non-motorized expenses, we increased it to three hundred seventy-eight thousand. Based on council's recommendation.
Uh, page forty, can you remind me what's that, what was that for?
That was council chair wanted to invest more in non-motorized expenses like crosswalks, street signs and lights.
That was from the local uh.
Yes, and then there's one for major streets, there's one on major streets, one on local streets. Uh, so page forty-one, there's no changes, and then page forty-two is where the other change for local street. Uh, traffic services, which is like again, non-motorized for the local streets, the side streets. Uh, that was increased to three hundred fifty thousand.
So that's another three fifty.
Yeah. Three fifty on each one, so major streets is for like streets like Beach Daily, local streets is for the side streets. And then for page forty-three, the MIDC grant revenue, uh. That increased to offset the expenses in MIDC, which pays for the legal fees for the court. I believe, yeah, court services. There have been no changes to page forty-four. No changes to page forty-five. No changes for page forty-six. No changes for page forty-seven. No changes for page forty-eight. Age forty-nine and fifty also have no changes, which is the traffic immobilization fund. Page fifty-one, there have been no changes. And page fifty-two, there have been no changes. Age fifty-three, we have the state grants, that's for. I believe the safe streets, that's a fire station, right? Yeah, so that is the fire station uh expense, which is also offset in the revenue.
Was that from uh? Was that a federal grant for the design?
That's actually the revenue, yes.
From Rashida.
And then in the capital outlays section, we have the five hundred thousand to offset that revenue. So the revenue on, the revenue on page fifty-three is offset by the expense on page fifty-four. Page fifty-five. Oh, we put council chair.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
No problem, I don't wanna, because I know you like speaking about the waterfront a lot, so wanna make sure you're aware.
You can go ahead. So what was the five twenty-one, five twenty-eight line added here again?
So this is the CDBGR disaster recovery uh grant, uh we are going out to bid for. Uh, and I believe that's the state or federal money is gonna be paid for, this is the revenue portion, and then, what's up?
Sorry, um, if you recall, during the floods of twenty twenty-one, uh they opened grants for different projects for flooding. So the CDBG disaster recovery portion of it, so we were awarded two grants, one for infrastructure, where we're replacing two bridges along the Eekridge Creek. And one for the planning for flood mitigation, so that's what these two grants are. Um, under the water CDBGDR, again, they've already been approved by council, we've already gone out for bids, um. The projects are about to begin, they're offset through the revenues, so this is the revenue side of things, what you're seeing right now. Then you also have a new line item, or sorry, not new because it was always there, but a new amount that was budgeted. Which is the five nine two zero 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 six three six, which is the FEMA grant reimbursements. There are four FEMA grants that are currently being worked on by the city, there's the flooding um scoping work. Through engineering and the stormwater conveyance grant through engineering, again, we have approval for these grants from the council, they're ninety percent matches. And then we have the two home demolition grants uh for.
Who's working on these, by the way, is this Plant Moran or is this our city engineer?
So it's a combination of both, a lot of the design was done through Plant Moran, again, we went out for bids for the CDBGDR. So I'm not a hundred percent sure who ended up getting it, I can get back to you with that, um.
Sorry, Mariana, before we move on, can you go back to line five twenty-eight? I'm not understanding the ARPA uh. ARPA fund, eleven million, five twenty-three, so what's that?
Sorry, are we going back up?
Yeah, the first, like almost the first line.
Okay, sorry, yeah, you didn't highlight that one because I think that one was already there.
Wasn't before, no.
Sorry, it wasn't there before?
No, it wasn't.
So we should have highlighted yellow, I apologize. That's the American Rescue Plan funding that was allocated for the water main replacements.
So this is out of the fourteen million?
Correct.
Yeah, but we we only used seven, and then you guys, they were gonna give us X amount of dollars. We only had seven remaining, remember? We were talking about square, we were talking about um, square meters. Councilman Sav was in Lebanon. And we used seven million, three hundred dollars. It was not eleven million dollars.
So there's two portions of this grant. Uh, there is a three million dollar match for the DWSRF portion of the water main replacement. Which is covered through the match through the DWSRF. And then there's a second motion that was for the seven million dollars uh for the remainder.
Did we get the money from the DWS? Did we receive the money?
We've been doing drawdowns, so yes, we've received about two million dollars in the account. Yes, so um, because it's a reum- um, state revolving fund. It's not gonna be showing in your revenues as uh they show up. They're gonna be in a liability account, um, which.
Because it's being paid to fix, and I get it.
Correct. So the money has come in, it's in that liability account. Unfortunately, it's it's not really clear in your budget because it's not part of your budget. Um, but the money is hitting the bank. Um, do you remember what the number is? Sorry, I just wanted to show you on the general ledger where the liabilities are, which we can always pull that number whenever you ask us to. So yes, so that's what the ARPA eleven million dollar revenues is for.
We're using this as a revenue. If we eliminated three million of that, four million. We'd be a, a, a bigger pickle.
Okay. Again, this is restricted money for ARPA that could only be used on water infrastructure projects. Um, so yes, so far we've received two million, four hundred and seventeen, one hundred forty six point four eight in reimbursements from ARPA, I mean from DWSRF.
Thank you.
And then there's also the CWSRF. And for the CWSRF, we've received a hundred and eighty three thousand, sixty three and twenty three cents.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions with the FEMA and grants?
No.
No? Okay.
So we dropped the sale of new meters to five hundred thousand. And then we dropped our water bill penalties, uh, expected income revenue to be four hundred fifty thousand dollars. And then we removed the reimbursement from MMRMA since that's not expected this year.
MMRMA you removed?
Yes. Okay. Page fifty six, um, we calculated the actual cost of the uniform contract uh contract we have with the universe. Uh, it's expected to be somewhere around thirteen thousand. Uh, we put fifteen thousand just in case there's any loss replacement. Or damaged clothing that needs to be repaired, additional cost.
Wait, this is for?
Clothing. Seven one three point zero zero zero, page fifty six.
Water admin and general, okay.
And then.
Do we need fifteen thousand at high?
They need fifteen thousand, yes.
Okay, thank you. Yes, that is correct.
So down here at the FEMA grant, these are the expenses related to uh the revenues that were budgeted for. So they offset by ninety percent of the revenues. And same thing with the CDBGDR, we actually have bid those, put those out for bid. And we have the companies ready for selection, but those are actually selected by the state, since it's their money. And then ego expenditures, um, that's three hundred eighty seven thousand, eight hundred thirty five dollars. Mariana, can you speak more about that one?
Sorry, let me open this one up. I think it's another grant. Um.
So repairs and maintenance we removed. And then we added it to the nine three two account, which is the account it should be in.
Which one is that? I'm sorry?
Uh, nine three one, there used to be thirty five thousand, but we actually have, uh. We're only using the nine three two accounts going forward, since you don't need to.
You need the nine three one and the nine three two?
Sorry about that.
You're saying you don't need the nine three one, nine three two, you're only using the nine three two?
Yes, only nine three two for all budgets, just to make it um.
And you combine it's thirty five thousand?
Yes. And then page fifty seven.
Yeah, one second, she, I'm gonna wait, I'm Mariana.
Okay.
I just also want you to know if we, if we're combining thirty one and thirty two. It actually comes up to thirty four thousand, five hundred. I mean, I know it's just an additional five hundred dollars, but I just want your math to be correct. Cause you you highlighted nineteen thousand, five hundred, and then fifteen thousand, which adds up to thirty four thousand, five hundred. But when you, when you're looking at the sign item, the sign item number is off by five hundred dollars.
Would you like to put that thirty four thousand, five hundred?
I mean, I mean, then the math is wrong. My question, how did this math, how was it able to become wrong? Because. Because the total sum at the end.
There's a lot more changes than just that amount.
You know, I'm just doing thirty one and thirty two. Which adds up to thirty four fifty, right? Thirty four thousand, five hundred.
Thirty five, it was twenty and fifteen.
Twenty and fifteen. The projected activity for this year was nineteen thousand, five hundred.
Am I tripping?
Yeah, yeah. You look at the old one, they had twenty and fifteen separate. If you combine them. Be thirty five.
It'll be thirty five.
I see where you're saying.
Where'd you get the five hundred from?
You're thinking of them.
Add these two numbers together.
Nineteen five and fifteen.
Yeah, but this is the projected activity for this year. We're talking about the budget for next year. This is for this year.
Okay. I do see where.
Okay.
I'm, but thank you for catching that.
So basically, that nineteen five, we made it twenty for next year.
Uh, so, Mariana, did you find it?
Yeah, sorry, it's right here. It's the State High Water Infrastructure Grant. Sorry, we had so many ego grants, it took me a second to find it. Uh, but that's what that expenditure is for. It will, it will also be offset by a revenue. Um, I believe we missed the revenue for that one, so I might double check. It's a twenty six percent match grant for us, but the rest of it is getting reimbursed, and I don't recall seeing it there, so we'll add it.
Okay.
Any other question on page fifty six?
Nope.
Page fifty seven, we made changes to the water projects that we are currently undertaking. And to match the expected expenditures for the project totals. Any questions?
So how come they were added now? Are these grants too?
Yes, those are, they're half bond, half grants.
Are you adding it to the budget?
Why?
Because we have the contracts already and they're starting to do the work, so it needs to be in the budget in order for us to pay them.
Did they come before it, before us?
Yes, so again, these were the ones that you went out for bonds, Patrick.
Yeah, we went out for bonds. I know that, but I don't know, we were awarded the contractor, yeah?
Yes, so that was part of the bond. It was the agreement. We had to have the bond in order for the agreement of the grants to come through.
That's correct.
So yes, all of these were awarded, all of these were bid. Uh, the contracts are already in place. This is the two million dollars that I just showed you in reimbursement. We're already getting money back from them. Uh, but again, unless we spend the money, we won't get the money in the reimbursement.
Okay, thank you.
Just so everybody's aware, CSL L forty one and CSL L forty two are taken on by Pemara Enterprises. The water meter replacement is taken on by Ferguson and the subcontractor Vepo. And then the water main replacement is done by Bitigir.
So how come and uh, you had like specials as CSL forty one? You didn't budget for it last time, and now only, you did fifty one thousand last time.
Because that's.
So again, the request was there, but for some reason Shannon forgot to put them in. So we're just correcting to also put it in the requested item, not, I mean, in the budgeted item, not just the requested.
But these are all approved, you said, right?
Correct. Again, it's it's ongoing process. And they will carry on for future years as well. They will not all be completed this fiscal year.
Did we get any MMRMA refunds this year, or were those eaten up? I noticed that we took those out, and it's usually we get like, we get refunds of close to a million dollars.
So the fiscal year we're currently in, we did receive it. For the next fiscal year, I don't believe we're going to be able to get it. Because as you recall, we've already exhausted our minimum amount that has to be put into the MMRMA fund.
How do we plan on revenue, bring and make that revenue of the million dollars that we're losing?
So again, historically, that hasn't really been a revenue, except for the last three years where we've been getting it. Um, but it's it's not a consistent thing, right? It kind of pays off the insurance itself. So you get one million, you pay one million, it covers what our insurance is.
I know, so now we're gonna be.
Any other question on page fifty seven? Nope.
Get it from, because of lawsuits, but it was a revenue that we, now we're having to pay the additional million and not get, have it, or it doesn't pay itself off. We're not planning ourselves, we're not planning or preparing for that. Instead, we're just saying we're gonna get all these other different revenues, and we're gonna be able to make up for it, when the reality is, we're probably not going to. All right, let's continue.
Okay. Page fifty eight, there are no changes. Page fifty nine, there are no changes. Page sixty, there are no changes. Page sixty one, there are no changes. Then we move on to the library fund, which is page sixty two. The reimbursement from MMRMA, ten thousand was removed.
I'm getting it. Let's go ahead.
So for page sixty three, the line items weren't highlighted, uh, by accident, however, the salaries changed.
Which page?
Uh, page sixty three. So the salaries changed. I do know that telephones eight five three point zero zero zero. Was updated to twelve thousand. And then the capital outlay was reduced. Which is nine eight one point zero zero zero. Um, there might be a couple line items, I'm just having Mariana check.
Salary line item, uh, the contractual services was increased by fifteen thousand dollars. The dues and memberships was increased by ten thousand dollars, and the capital outlay was reduced by thirty thousand dollars to offset all of those changes. By the director. And again, there will be an additional change in salaries to increase his salary to the eighty five thousand from eighty two, so there will be an additional three thousand.
Uh, where it says that, uh, on seven three eight. How come we went down to one forty eight?
For which line item?
It's under the line, it says net of revenues appropriation fund seven three eight.
Yes.
It says one hundred forty eight thousand, seventy?
That means they are not in the deficit, or their fund specifically.
I don't know, for some reason I have here one fifty seven. The prior.
There's about like.
You guys had one sixty nine before, and then I, we have a scratch through it and says one fifty seven, eight eighty seven.
With the increase in the salaries and the other line items that didn't offset exactly, so it went down to one forty eight. Do we have any questions?
Yes, yes. You give me the final draw number. I know I have it written down here, but I'm just trying to get my papers here. You give me the final draw number of revenues that we believe that are coming in.
Sorry about that.
The revenue, the revenues.
The total revenue?
Yeah.
The current or expected for the next fiscal year?
The current, twenty six, twenty five. Are we saying sixty nine million, three hundred twenty one thousand?
Sixty three, one five one nine five.
Well, what page is that?
The general.
Yeah. Sixty three million. And and we're projected, it's been. Fifty nine?
No, we projected to be spending sixty three, it would be about sixty three, one ten.
What do you see, what do you see there?
That would be on page.
Three.
I think it's gonna be like page forty seven.
Page three. Estimated revenues.
So. It's page thirty four, um, where it shows you the total appropriations for expenditures, which it's going to be. Sixty three million, seventy one, seven oh two. No, this is. Oh, right, right, sorry. Uh, so the changes we made today are not included there, which it's all of these, if you wanna do the math.
Okay, and let me ask you, how much is remaining in our fund balance after this?
Sorry, so in the last one, we had eighty thousand, two hundred fifty one remaining, and with the changes, let us do the math real quick.
What, after the pennies? What's nine mil? No, you'd have like four thousand more left in fund baskets.
I mean, we had one, one extra dollar was spent from the budget. This goes over on their, on their overtime.
So how much do you think the fringe is?
It has to be revenue.
Probably not even having water here.
You can afford to get water to the council?
We're not even cleaning the dusts. The dust.
All right, I can live with that.
They can, they can work now. You want it right now? You want the numbers right now? Cause I don't want it to be off. I mean, I didn't know it's gonna be very tight.
So it's gonna be approximately thirty two.
Thirty thousand, two fifty one.
Thirty thousand, two fifty one, sorry. Thirty thousand, two-fifty-one, sorry.
I mean, once you have the final number. You might go into page sixty-three. Can you explain this to me? When you go at the bottom, it says appropriation of funds, one fifty-seven. Uh, estimated revenues above is one forty-eight and you have a deficit of nine million. How does that, can you explain that to me?
So then because the water fund is expended. The water fund is, uh, expending more than they're bringing in revenue, but there's a enterprise and a uh, fund that needs infrastructure improvements, so you're not always gonna be net revenues in that fund.
I'm sorry, say that again, I'm not.
So for the water fund. On a year to, on a fiscal year-to-year basis, you're not always looking to match revenues to expenses because the whole purp- purpose of the water fund is to keep maintaining infrastructure and sometimes in years, you're gonna be expending more than you're bringing in revenue.
You got it? Mariana, I want you to also know, just on historic data, for the last ten years since two thousand and twelve, we received one mil, one million dollars from MMRMA. And it hasn't been the last three years, so it hasn't been just like, oh, something we see for the last three years. We've actually been getting it since two thousand and twelve. I just want, I just wanted to correct you on that.
If you want us to add it, we can.
We're not getting it.
Uh, you can. So again, like when they propose the new numbers, they will still send you a letter asking you, you, you would like to get it back into the general fund or if you would like to keep it in their fund. The problem is, if you don't keep it in their fund, you're still gonna have to pay it so that we're, um, consistent with their limits of what the minimum we have to have in their account.
We're gonna have to pay regardless, cause you're not getting anything this year.
We are getting it. We are getting a reimbursement this year. I'm just not a- accounting for it because I recommend that the administration keeps it in the fund that we need for MMRMA. Because they're already requesting for additional money to be put into that account.
About thirty more lawsuits waiting. Scary. Well, that was our public hearing, uh, presentation, and so now I'm gonna go ahead and open this up to the public. You got. You do? Okay, what is it? Sure, uh, let's go. You know what? I'm not, I'm not gonna hold anybody. You have unlimited time to speak. I think this is, any taxpayer deserves to be able to talk about how their money is being spent. I don't think we should be deserved to limit anybody. I am gonna start with, uh, in person here. Let's see, uh. Go ahead. Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on. Realistically, I'm gonna give you five minutes.
See if we can get it done in that amount, huh?
Alright.
I, I don't expect very much longer. Rachel LePoy, Merrick Street, Dearborn Heights.
Thank you.
Um, I, I would recommend, and I think this kinda happened last year, where we were kinda reviewing some changes before the public hearing starts. And just to respect the public's time, I would ask that maybe you guys schedule that for like the day before or a little bit earlier. So that if the public hearing starts at six, a member of the public can reasonably expect that they would be speaking within an amount of time for the six o'clock.
I just wanna pause, I mean, I just wanna, I wanna respond to you, Rachel. There wasn't really back and forth. Unfortunately, the council didn't receive it until this morning.
I agree. Agreed that, that.
I, I wanna make.
Clearly, next year we'll also be able to get those updated changes a little bit faster because that's the next part of it. It's not just on you guys. It's the whole team thing, right?
Yeah, and I just wanna make clear that I emailed them on Saturday, said, hey, Saturday, we still haven't gotten any information, like, I'm waiting, I wanna review this. I don't wanna review this an hour before I come in. Unfortunately, we didn't get it until today.
And it wasn't on the public website, I believe, uh, the clerk's office sent out an email around dinnertime-ish, which I get you guys are extremely busy, like, this is a big project, there's a lot going on, there's a lot of other tasks, normal tasks that you guys have to do too. So I get it, but maybe we should maybe schedule the public hearing a week later and may look at what the timing might be that we could give a little extra time there.
Don't the public hearing have to be the first week of May, uh, I, I believe? Yes, but yeah.
Whatever, however, we need to look at it for the calendar for next year to maybe give that, make sure we have that space, right? Um, so that nobody has to be stressed out, nobody has to be scrambling to try and understand what's going on. Um, but to some extent, even if we had had time, to me, it feels like the budget this year is a wish, a dream, a hope and a prayer right now. Um, it's, it's a wonderful idea. I don't know that it's entirely doable. It feels like we're fine by the seat of our pants. It doesn't feel like there's an actual plan that we're looking at anything long-term. We're not looking at anything, um, it doesn't seem like we're talking about things that we can really change. Ways that we can change to bring in revenue that aren't just grants. Grants are for one-time projects. We need to bring in sustainable revenue, right? Like, I don't know if we need to make some online courses or something and start selling them and get some, you know, revenue streams going. I don't know what we gotta do here, but we gotta do something. So, um, to me, I also feel like, and this is something that city council, you guys are gonna have to look at as we have these different contract negotiations with the unions. It feels like we've been prioritizing getting everybody's salaries to comparable with other city, other cities without looking at the long-term future of those decisions. We haven't looked at what those are gonna cost us moving forward, or even a full picture of what that immediate cost is. So you guys have been making decisions that just have been, yeah, we wanna get everybody equal to where other cities are, but we can't afford it and we didn't consider at that time, okay, if we get up to that point, how are we raising the income? It doesn't feel like that's happened at all. Um, so I would love to see maybe some study sessions coming up soon. You guys discussing some different options for revenue streams. I'll toss a few ideas your way. Um, pilot agreements, perhaps Vista Maria or other nonprofits in the city, um, that use a considerable amount of city resources. Maybe we can discuss with them, come up with an agreement where they can kinda chip in a little bit to our bottom line, our general fund. So that we can cover, you know, police call expenses. If they're making a lot of calls, what's that average cost per call to the city? If they're a nonprofit, they're not paying property taxes, we're getting no income from them, right? Um, I think honestly, we need to look at the Warren Valley contract and see what we can do with them to renegotiate that, to make it better for everybody. I think it, there's ways to make it better for our leases and our concessionaire and for us. Um, because we are a community and we're a family, and I think we do wanna work together and see it successful and bringing in money both for them and for us. And I think there's ways to do it, but we've just gotta get creative and sit down at a table and negotiate it. Um, and really, the biggest thing to me is actually enforcing our own ordinances that are already written. Our business license, uh, rules, for example, say that if the, um, renewal is sixty days late, they're supposed to restart as a new license. We don't generally enforce that, uh, we've been giving a lot of grace, but we can't be nice and be bankrupt. So we might need to start saying, hey, if you're late on that business license, in the past, we were fine through just paying the late fee, but now we're gonna make you pay the full new fee. There's other fees and fines I'm sure we could look at to raise revenue there too. I'd love to see study sessions on that. We should have all those, every single license, all of that we need to be looking at. Um, building permits as well. And I believe, um, council chair, you and I had a funny little conversation. I think you said that we need a permit to replace a shingle or a toilet, something like that. That's unenforceable. We can't enforce that. There's no way. So you guys need to look at those, probably with the planning commission, those ordinances to say, let's knock off the stuff that's unenforceable so that we can actually enforce what is important, the stuff that's gonna have high value and bring in permits. Because right now, if everybody goes, oh, it's too much of a hassle to deal with Dearborn Heights, I'm not gonna even look into it, we're missing out on a lot of permit revenue, right? And then the SSS fees never go up because that was never reported, we have no idea. So those little things, there's things that we can still do. We've been making improvements. We've been dealing with a lot of challenges and like complications, right? But I think there's things that you guys can do and look at this year to make big changes. And the last one I would love to see is to look to our, um, maybe upper level federal things. I'd love to see a finance oversight council committee that meets with the comptroller's office and the administration once a month. Goes, two or three of you, goes over that budget to actual report, says what GL lines are getting close to getting over or looking a little shaky. And then you guys at that next council meeting come back and tell the rest of the council, these are the things we're keeping an eye on right now. And the public knows, oh, these are the things we're keeping an eye on now. And then if you guys go, oh, all of a sudden we're in the hole, this parking lot is gonna cost a million dollars. Then you can start talking then about, okay, what are we looking for? We're looking for grants. We're looking for what? Are we doing a garage sale of, you know, city stuff in the basement? What are we doing, right? So having that monthly committee meeting might really help you guys feel more secure in knowing what's going on with the budget and save you time then on the budget sessions next year. Thank you.
Great, great, uh, great conversation, Rachel. I, I agree with you on a lot of those things and I think this is the first thing that I spoke about in the beginning is spending all this money, but our revenue is like right here. And it's constantly been like this. There's never even been like a, a, a level playing field where we're just like, alright, we're breaking even every single year. We're always outspending revenue and, and you're right, grants are great, but how do we find in, and, you know, but going back to like you saying, you know, people that don't renew their license. Let's just say these people say, you know what, screw Dearborn Heights, I don't wanna renew it. Now, now you don't, now you can't capture that tax. Now you're losing more money and it's like, do you wanna penalize people and potentially harm your, you know, the future of the city? So like, you gotta really be very careful on some of those things. You're right, but I mean, let's just say you wouldn't even want up to three hundred dollars, right? Is that really gonna be enough and sufficient to be able to say, you know, fifty businesses, we got them for an additional three hundred dollars, like, we need to start thinking large and bigger and how to bring in more revenue, and I agree. Maybe, you know, we can look at some parts of the course where we can bring in more revenue. I, I mean, you know, maybe like, I know we do the festival every year, Sphere Festival brings, generates money. Let's do one on this, let's do three of them. Let's do five of them. People love it. You know, I think, I think the Dearborn Homecoming Festival said like they generated close to almost a million dollars. And the best part about it is they have all sponsors that pay for all this stuff, not even coming from the general fund. Why are we not coming after big donors and saying, give us money? I mean, if, if Ford is giving fifty million dollars to Dearborn, I mean, fifty thousand dollars to Dearborn, I promise you they'll give Dearborn Heights ten thousand. Somebody's just gotta ask. And now guess what? We can put that more money into more events for our, for our community, but the truth is, just kinda going back a little bit to what Rachel said, I'm, I'm, I'm actually very scared to hear that we only have forty thousand dollars in a fund balance. Thirty. Thirty, thirty-two thousand or, or, or less in a fund balance. That means if any car breaks through DPW right now, you can't fix it. We, we, we can't do nothing. We are completely tied. Truth is, and I don't wanna keep pointing back and forth, back and forth, cause I'm trying to like, you know, we're, we're trying to get away from that, but three years ago, we had so much money. We were, we were rich. And I just feel like we didn't capitalize on that, instead we continued to put a revenue loss, revenue loss, revenue loss, revenue loss, and where you come in, then this year is gonna, you, you know, twenty-five, twenty-six is gonna have to be a very tough. And, and, and it's on the directors. You guys need to do your part. Cause we, like, kinda like what Rachel here said, a lot of hopes, wishes, prayers in this budget. You need to pray that, I mean, we're gonna need Renee. A lot of praying here because this budget has to go as, as you guys hypothetically speak. Reality is, the last two years, you guys failed to meet those type of revenues.
There's, there's one item, piggybacking on what, uh, she said, that, uh, we could charge a lot more for the towers. We've got about four towers, we've never raised the rates that they give us, for the towers in the city. We're way undercharging.
What towers?
A lot of those are thirty-year contracts.
You gotta be kidding.
Yeah. But some of them are due and we're looking into what the new revenue streams are going to be. I know that, um, they have to go out for bids to see what the current actual costs for it are. Um, but that is a revenue increase that we're looking into as we renew new contracts for that. But yeah, a lot of them were stuck in the same amount for many years.
Uh, any, I'm, any other one else in the audience? Hey, do ma'am, please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on. I'm gonna give you five minutes.
Five minutes. Uh, Renee Murna, Annapolis, Dearborn Heights. So, um, just a couple of notes, but, um, I'm really, I'm really excited the way this is going because I have been praying for the city. I've been praying about the crime, but I need to know, is it going down, shifting anywhere? Is it getting better in the north, south, southeast, west?
Honestly, this is a bunch of hearing.
Okay, well, the, the area that, that we're in right now, I'm always praying for wisdom for this area, so, you know.
Thank you so much.
So, huh, so, uh, one, uh, one thing I wanted to ask Mariana, you know, how's it feel being thrown under the bus, you know? Like, you guys are brutal throwing her under the bus, you know? I, I'm not gonna say anything about what she did say or what she didn't say, but I remember something about, about city council owning the, owning, when I first started here a while ago, but, you know, I, I'm not gonna put my word on it. But the thing is, be, be real careful because she can pull up the video. And it'll all be there, whatever she said or didn't say, same thing on, on your end, you know, the video's there. So anyway, I just felt bad for them. It seemed like they were both, they were getting thrown under the bus a lot. It got agitated here a little while, for a little bit, and I understand that. And it has to, it has to, to touch a nerve. And that's what I've been praying for, that all this stuff will start surfacing so that the city council will realize their shortcomings in following through on whatever they're voting on. And also the people that are accountable will be held accountable. So this is actually a blessing to see you guys get agitated. I'm sorry that it feels bad because it does feel ugly. But it's for a purpose, and the purpose is, everybody has to own their part. Including the citizens, how's that? Uh, the other thing is, uh, the ones you, they were talking about the, um, licenses or something that were coming due and, and, uh, council chair, I'm learning to say council chair. The only thing that, that I really disagree with you is when you say, well, if I raise it, they're gonna leave. If, you, basically what you just said is, if I enforce the law, they're gonna leave. That's what I heard in my ears. If I enforce the ordinance, well, what if they leave? Well, if they leave, that's it. Somebody else will be there, something will happen. Listen, I think what, what people are doing is they're leaving, um, God out of the equation here. And he's got an answer, but he's not really ready to share it with you guys until the stuff comes out and everybody owns their part. There's an answer. There's a big answer for the city. There's a huge answer for the city, for revenue to be on top again. But God can't bless like chaos and animosity and, and blaming. He, he cannot bless that, you know, sorry, but this isn't, this is my belief. I think this is going on track perfectly. I think that, that you guys are doing what you're supposed to be doing. Things are being surfaced that are supposed to be surfaced. Now, if we could just control the way that we respond when something comes up. Yes, it's frustrating because the citizens are, are blaming you and then, you know, and then it goes back on them. Everybody's, everybody has a part to it. So I just wanna say, you guys, you know, don't be frustrated. I know it's hard to not be frustrated with what's going on. Nobody's blaming you. You got a job just like everybody else, you know? We love you. You're not hated by everybody. It's the fact that it's, this needs to happen to have a clean city. And there will be an answer. I believe it. Thank you.
By the way, do you mind, council chair? By the way, ma'am, we, we did not throw Mariana under the bus, but it happened, the administration elected Mariana to represent them. So that's it. We love, we love Mariana and we do appreciate all the hard work that she does and that's a big thing that she is here representing the administration. So thank you, Mariana, just to put it on record. Thank you. How you doing, ma'am? Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on, you have five minutes.
Margaret King, Mayfair Street, Dearborn Heights. Um, this is just heartbreaking to see my city in shambles. Um, finance-wise. I don't know what to say. I just know that you allocated money for Joey and clearly it's not here and that kills me, Mo. It breaks my heart. Um, a grant writer would be great. It would be great. It would help us out, and I think the cost of the grant writer and then the cost of what that grant writer would bring in would definitely help us. Um, I don't know what else to say. You okay?
Uh, just something else came to my mind that we didn't even budget for.
Well, it's just an option. Alright, thanks, guys.
Oh, thank you. Thank you so much, Margaret. But, and we've discussed it before, what happens a lot of times is each department has to, somebody with expertise in that area, fire. Somebody with expertise in that area, fire, Parks and Recreation, has to write for the grant. So just to have a general grant writer, it's, it's not often how it works. Alright. How you doing, ma'am? Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on, you have five minutes. Actually, four minutes and fifty-five seconds.
Why do I get left? Angela Venegas, Dearborn Heights, Dwight Street. Sorry you're mad at me, Mo, but like everybody else here, pretty angry tonight. Just to, uh, know, and I'd like, someone asked me since Mariana's been, is chief of, uh, staff, um. Where's our mayor and how long has he been absent?
Done since last Monday.
Okay, so who's running the city right now?
Chief of Staff.
Okay.
The mayor is checking his emails every day and responding to things as well, so he is active, just he's not here physically. But also to put it on the record, the mayor hasn't taken a vacation in the five years that he's been here. And it's not unusual for an individual to take a week off.
Man, well, he hasn't been in a council meeting in over six months, so that's no excuse. But anyways, wanna bring up a situation yesterday, Mo, you know, I've had a neighbor who. Put up a roof on their house and ended up probably building a apartment because there's no permit on their house and. Ended up having to get a hold of ordinance and then I called the mayor's office and Mariana was on, in a meeting and, but it did get taken care of today. But this is another way our city's losing revenue. We got people doing work, aren't pulling permits. I personally own a dog. My dog, permit for my dog, his licenses have been eight dollars since I've lived here twenty-five years. I mean, I think eight dollars, he's a male dog, neutered, you know? I think those fees can go up. I mean, for the time it takes you guys to make a license, to spend a stamp, to mail it back, to have somebody process, it's gotta just be breaking even. Seriously. There's, there's things that, you know, put it to twenty bucks. There's, there's just a lot of things in the city that just aren't being taken care of. I mean, here's another thing. How many council meetings do we have about all the properties that we're gonna sell here in Dearborn Heights that we had real estate people here? You guys had study sessions. We spent so much time here, we formed a committee. You're on it, you're on it, I'm on it, Lynn's on it, Sue Hare's on it. We, we, we can't even get those properties in order. You guys are supposed to meet with a total, it just seems like nothing is getting accomplished. You know, we, we talk about garbage day, all the people parking in the streets, we got people parking on their, on their lawns on garbage day, we're allowing all this. And there's just so many more things that could get accomplished and it all starts with our police department. They need more officers. I don't care what we have to do, and I was talking with the chief. Maybe we can assess twenty-five dollars per household on everybody's taxes, just so we can get some officers here. We, we need our police department. There's something, we, we have to do something. Without the enforcement, without the laws, things are falling apart. And it just isn't about administrative things. There's, there's just way too many things that are being let go. When you got the neighborhoods and houses so full of blight, you, you welcome the, the. The vermin from outside to come in. It looks terrible. We need to start doing something. And I don't care, you guys as a council. And hopefully we're gonna have a new mayor and things are gonna get better because the past four, five years, whatever's under this administration, we had a police department. And I don't care what anybody says, you guys wanna call it the good old boys or whatever, we had a police department that people, you couldn't get in here. Our police department was well-known to be one of the best police departments in Dearborn Heights and it's falling apart. Nobody even wants to come here. We gotta do something, you guys. We gotta get law and order back in our city and, and, and we gotta get the community involved. We're very diverse, but if we all come together as one, different ideas, different approaches of things, I believe things can be better. But I think it's gonna start with a new mayor. And then, that's all I gotta say. And God bless the city and hope things get better.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Seeing none, I'll take it to Zoom. We're gonna start with Nargis. You can unmute her, Madam Clerk. How you doing, ma'am? Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on. I'm sorry if I gave away your name.
Hey, um, Nargis Salawati, Angster Road, um, Dearborn Heights, Michigan.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, I, I think Rachel made a lot of good points, um, uh, mentioning the courses, for example. Um, I, I'd be, I'm happy to be a part of that committee. Um, you got a lot of people that are very talented in the city, very passionate, love their city. And, um, wanna see funding come in, of course. Um, you, you mentioned the Spirit Festival, I think that's great, but I think also we can, um, maybe focus on a different demographic, like for example. Like with millennials, I know a big thing for us is of eating good, eating healthy, maybe having some. Local talent, some volunteers that, um, you know, wanna teach people how to cook and. You know, I don't know, charge fifty, a hundred a class, something like that, and that goes towards the city, of course. Um, I think it's important. I, I think if people are gonna get involved, which of course they want to, they wanna know that their money's being, the, the city is using the money in the right way. Um, with finance control, I think that the point that Rachel made is great. Because, um, you know, we can, we the, we the public can hold these, uh, characters, these people, um. Accountable, maybe, maybe there's some formalities or some, uh, a limit to what people can do that, that work for the city, but you know, we, we got your back, you know? Somebody's spending money the way they're not supposed to be, we can, you know, help, uh, watch that. Um, another thing I thought maybe, um, with affordable housing, I think that's a big one. Uh, and, um, like I, and another point Rachel made was Vista Maria. I mean, if this is a, this is a nonprofit that's getting, um, a lot of tax exemptions, not paying property tax, whatever. I think we should be able to have our own investigations. I can tell you for a fact, I lived there and I also worked there. So, ev- and everybody that, that works there knows that it's totally corrupt. Uh, not to go too much in detail, but, um, the main issue that those girls have. Is not having anything to, no structure, you're having all this funding coming in. And they're essentially just being treated like, like cash cows, you know, for lack of a better word. You know, uh, while they're there until they're eighteen and then, you know, they're off, they do whatever. They have to fend for themselves. So I think having a, like, I mean, if this Maria could easily use that funding. To build affordable, affordable housing for when they do age out. And that's not being done, um, that's not being done. Uh, so that's, that's a big issue and I, I mean, you don't need someone with a PhD to tell you what's working, what's not. I mean, you could just use maybe information from people that used to like live there like myself or work there. Just that, I mean, anybody could tell you that we need more affordable housing and. As of now, we only have one place and it's a senior center for sixty-two and up. I have a disability. And I've been, um, yeah, I've been dealing with homelessness for ten years and only now I finally made my, I guess you could say my big break. And, you know, I'm trying to see what's going, what's going on. Like now I can kinda focus on, uh. My city, who, my career, when you're homeless, you can't do things like that. You know, you are stuck, you are so stuck. So I'm just trying to figure out, uh, trying to. Figure out how, how we can prevent this kind of pain from happening to people like me. If we're disabled or in foster care, homeless, how can we prevent that pain from happening in the future? Um, so, uh. I think that's most likely what we need to make sure, um. Uh, and I, I just wanna briefly ask about the RX Kids Program, if that's something that, that Dearborn Heights is. Gonna get funding for, I'm not sure because it sounds like there's some financial issues. Um, but yeah, I think the fortunes are great and I'd love to, you know, maybe we can meet with other, um, neighbors and, um, people see. We'll co- maybe we can have like a little coaching class at the library or. Or, uh, maybe use some empty public land, um, to build like some kind of garden. Um, bring visitors in, bring revenue in, so, yeah.
Thank you so much, Nargis, and I love all those ideas and really I wanna say, uh, you know. Being somebody that grew up in a foster home and is now working there, trying to give back from what she has learned. Uh, you know, thank you for all that you have done and those are some really, really great points that you have brought forward. Thank you, Council Chair. I don't, I don't, let's not discuss.
No, uh, Nargis, if you can get my email off the city's website and email me about some stuff you discussed or send me an email with your information on it, please. Like to have a conversation with you.
Thank you. Uh, next up is Ken. He's muted. You're not gonna unmute her. Go ahead, I'll give her thirty quick seconds.
Sorry, what was the email?
It's gonna be H Saab, S A A B, at DearbornHeightsMI.gov.
Sorry, I went wrong time.
On the city website. It's on the city's website, but it's H A S S, I'm sorry, it's H Saab.
H Saab.
Yeah, last name is, you know, Saab, S A A B.
Uh huh.
At DearbornHeightsMI.gov.
Okay. Okay, you said email you?
Yeah. Give me out of your info, please.
Alright, of course. Take care.
Thank you.
Uh, we're gonna go with. Uh, we'll go with SuK.
Good evening, council, um. First off, what a sad night. And I wish I could be optimistic like Renee, but there is no way. That I think you guys can vote this, uh, budget in. And a few points. Um, we spend a lot of money on plant Moran. And Plant Moran has failed to find some errors that were addressed, uh, by our clerk, who I love. Um, it was thirty thousand dollars that wasn't allocated properly. My question is, since Plant Moran's paid all this money and they didn't find some errors that were done. Do we have anything where they're responsible or we can reduce it? I know, you know, if you go to H and R Block and you get audited, they take their fee away. So we need to do something with Plant Moran. Um, the other thing is. I don't remember if the contract for the police has forty-five police or more. Obviously forty-five's not enough. Um, I think you guys should look at the proposed, go ahead.
It's fifty-three.
It's fifty-three now.
No, it is, it's forty-five, but I've, uh, I'm working with the chief on restructuring the police department in the next few months. And, uh, we will be presenting a new personnel page once we actually get the staffing in order in that department.
Or I mean, I, I, and I know we're, we still have the, uh. Director of Support Services on there as well too, correct?
Sorry about that.
The Director of Support Services.
Yes, it's still on there.
Uh, uh, is that okay, Roger? He, he has discharged himself.
I would leave it alone. He gave a couple of dates. I don't think he's given a formal, uh, resignation.
No, there was an email, there was, there was an email that was sent out, you're on.
I know, but I mean, it's gotta be, it's a formal process that I was told it was not done as yet. I, I just. So I was just leaving it alone tonight.
I know, but did he turn on, did he turn in his car and his, and everything?
I, I don't know, everything that's been turned in.
You're on the email.
I, I don't know if everything's been signed and turned in.
No, he's, he was gonna speak.
Or been accepted, that's what I'm saying.
Besides, because we don't wanna violate anything, so we're gonna leave everything that I said, but we know that there's still a hundred, extra hundred thirty thousand.
And I spoke with the chief and we've already discussed our game plan. Um, hopefully within the next six months, we're gonna redesign the personnel of that department to have fifty police officers and it should only. Equate to about a forty thousand dollar change, fifty thousand dollar change of the entire police department budget, however. Uh, that will also allow, alleviate some of the overtime expenses and bring a little bit of revenue since patrol officers are the one that generate ticket revenue. Um, and you should come on to Moran, um, they aren't perfect. Uh, they never focused on the business licensing software, uh, they focused on the general ledger part and they've had a lot of work. Uh, working with the controller as well as the treasurer, um, with bank cracks and, um, entry errors, GL errors. Uh, which is why I spoke earlier, um, that once I get an accountant and a controller. I don't know who's gonna be the controller, whether it's gonna be me or somebody that the next mayor appoints. Um, I do believe that we are gonna need an accounting analyst position that takes on that role of. Uh, that Plant Moran's currently taking on in the day-to-day entries and ensuring that the GLs are properly updated, that revenues are hitting the correct accounts. Expenses are hitting the correct accounts as well as doing a, a budget actual analysis on a month-to-month or even a bi-weekly basis. To ensure we don't fall into the same overspending issues we previously had. I.
By the way, my, I'm so sorry to cut you off, please forgive me. Were you able to give us the breakdown of weight trim? As you said, you were, you mean, what, everything we're paying weight trim to contractual services, remember?
Yeah, I pulled it up on the screen, but I can give you an actual.
Yeah, I need the, it was supposed to be broken down on a separate thing with the city engineering, but. But because you're putting everything in, in contractual services.
Oh, I, I pulled it up on the screen. We said we're gonna do one point three million dollars if I can get you the actual spending.
We're, we're spending one point three million with them?
Yeah, by the end of this year, however, um, I did speak with the engineer about that. Keep in mind that Weight Trim is a project-based engineering firm, so we only contract them when we have a plethora of projects.
But we're putting one point three million dollars in, in expenses for Weight Trim. I'd like to see that closer to maybe a million dollars. Or maybe, yeah, I'd, I'd like to see that at a million dollars. So, I, I know you guys, I know we're gonna push back and forth.
Oh, no, no, I agree with you. I'm saying.
It should be like five hundred. I mean, we're giving Weight Trim.
We are gonna need to hire a couple of field engineers to help, uh, alleviate some of the field engineering that Weight Trim does.
Update this budget so that it shows that they're only making a million dollars, please.
Council Chair, if I may, um, I would be careful. Perhaps we should look at the breakdown first because the reason that they're spending so much money this particular year. Is because of the excessive amount of projects that we have in the water department and they are our engineers for those projects. So everything that you saw in those grants, they're the ones who are doing the engineering for all of those. So those are getting reimbursed through grants. So although the expenditure will show as a million dollars, a lot of that is getting reimbursed through the grants. Um, so unless you have like a specific breakdown of project by project. That would give you a clearer idea of what you can and cannot cut, just based on the existing contracts.
We're giving a million dollars. We're gonna, we're gonna.
I'll work with.
Contractual services for a million dollars.
I'll work with the engineer.
We don't need one point three million. I think a million dollars is more than. Our city's really, really in a tough position.
So I know, uh, I'll work with the engineer.
I'm looking at like raining project, four thousand dollars. Paving project change, thousand dollars. Citywide stormwater and flood, seven hundred ninety dollars. What have you done for C Y stormwater and flood? You know, uh, DWSRF meter replacement. They're consulting us and charges twelve thousand eight hundred ninety-two dollars. What I'm trying to say is, we can find ways, the administration and management, and find ways that come way trim. Either we're gonna go out for bids.
We did go out for bids, that's what I'm trying to explain. So for all of those water projects, we went out for bids and they were the winners and they were awarded the bids for all of those projects. A lot of them are more than a million dollars. So I would just be careful. We can give you the specifics of each contract that they have. But the ones that are existing contracts, you simply can't cut.
For twenty-five, twenty-six, I'd like to see Weight Trim at contractual services for no more than a million dollars.
So, well, Mariana is nice. No.
Thank you.
Okay, um, back to the whole Plan Moran thing, um. I, I know when I first got hired here, I kind of alluded to a plan on how to remove Plan Moran and. Reduce their contractual services. Um, now that I'm more in a position of power, so to speak. Um, I do, um, wanna speak with council, whether it's. In a session or not in a session about the game plan and how I think we can move the city forward in terms of the finance departments and ensuring that. We are efficient and optimized and not relying on a third-party contractor to do day-to-day, uh, business for our city.
I just, I also want you to keep in mind, six, seven years, I know Sue used to have time. Six, seven years, I know we keep talking about the controllers department, never had a CPA. Never hired CPA run our finance department. It's, it's mind-boggling. We've had five or six or seven different directors. David, David Sabudo was.
So with the.
David, David Sabudo was con- contracted out. He was the only CPA that came in here who ran a municipality. Every director was, was, was ne- has never had a CPA degree. Like, guys, come on, like, we need to pick up that for a second. How are you gonna have a finance department and then we're gonna say we wanna have a CPA analyst to be, to, to, to look at things, but the director doesn't need to be a CPA?
I'm not saying that the analyst needs to be a CPA, the analyst just has to have a business and accounting background. The analyst is gonna be a sixty-six thousand dollar position. It's not gonna be a director position.
I think the director needs to have a CPA degree and I think there needs to be a policy put in place for, for, not just for the sake of the next mayor, but for the sake of the city and the finances.
I.
As you know, when Mayor Dan Placca was here and he was around, God rest his soul. He had, he had a CPA degree. You know who overdid the budget? The, the mayor, the guy that had the CPA.
Council Chair, with that, may I make a recommendation? So we currently have the position posted, it's been posted since we knew Shannon was leaving. Uh, the candidates that we're getting aren't great, even though we did increase our salary for that position, they're, they're not great. None of them have CPAs. Um, we did get quotes from, uh, various recruiting firms. They would charge twenty-three percent of that person's salary. They would charge twenty-three percent of that person's salary in order to try to do a recruiting um No, um we went through private companies this time cause we didn't like the results that we received from Robert Heath in the past. But yes, pretty much any recruiting firm um would charge us about twenty-three percent to do a recruiting for us. Um again, we're not thrilled with the candidates that we've received. I share them with Plant Moran. We're gonna potentially interview two. Um but it's it's sparse, like the opportunity for CPAs out there, it's it's limited. Every community is looking for them right now. Um so a- again, it's gonna be a tough find. If if any of you know CPAs or anybody that has background in municipal accounting, please send them our way. Uh but it has been, for the past few years, an extremely competitive market and extremely hard to find candidates, which is why we've had such high turnover. Um there are better salaries, easier positions to be in, and um the candidates keep leaving. But if you would like to approve the twenty-three percent uh payment to one of those contractors, we can present it to you at the next council meeting.
Chair, I I just wanna respond to it. Go ahead. I swear I would pay, I would pay a municipal C P A, you can give him two hundred thousand dollars. And 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 the truth is, you're eliminating Plant Moran gap, you're you're giving him a hundred thousand dollar increase. You're gonna have him run all the finances for the city that's gonna manage. I think Vince said it like a hundred times. Why don't we have like a manager that oversees our spending? We don't have that. You know who used to do the for- for the late mayor was Dan Palacca.
And I understand that, council chair. The point I'm trying to make is, my game plan is to get that point. Now, I I would love to have a C P A in that department. I would love to have it. But a hundred fifteen thousand, you're going, you're gonna get people with forty-five years of municipal experience. You're gonna get people closer to my level of experience. I'm not saying I'm the smartest or the bravest.
You do a great job, Matty.
No, I know that, and I'm just giving you a heads up, like, you're right, you're gonna have to get to the one fifty to one seventy mark to truly get.
A percent.
But, and I do wanna give you a heads up. I personally say you keep your options open and if the right candidate shows up that has the correct experience and the correct mindset and the correct background that you need, the C P A isn't required. The reason I'm saying this is although I'm looking to lessen Plant Moran, I'm not saying to get rid of them completely. They can be somewhere around thirty to fifty thousand per year just to ensure that the audit work is done correctly. And that way, you pay your se- your controller hundred fifteen, hundred twenty. You're paying plant plant Moran fifty thousand and you cover the C P A duties and not have to try to find that C P A. Now, if you do find a C P A at a hundred fifty to a hundred seventy-five thousand, then you can remove Plant Moran completely cause that C P A would take on those duties.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Well, just briefly, it, one thing about a C P A, they're certified to do audits. Yes, that's. No, and and like Plant Moran will tell us they they test certain areas. It's a big science to, to, our controller issues the checks. And so what we need is somebody familiar with, I I can't think of a city in the the area that has a certified public accountant as a controller. It would be nice, but you're you're, as uh Marty said, you're looking at a big expense. For um uh.
It's not over a million dollars in three years.
Uh the comptroller's office. Um uh somebody with like in Westland, Steve Smith, he used to work here. Um he's been doing it for twenty, and that's where Shannon came from, was was Westland.
Council chair.
Well, hang on, I I want Sue cause we took.
Can I make one more comment and then I'm gonna let, let's let's.
Yeah, let's go, let Sue have it. It's her, it's her time. Okay, thank you.
Hi, everybody. Um I would suggest that, well, when Chief Swob was here, he promised that the reserves were gonna start ticketing on garbage day. And he said that publicly, he said that to me. It hasn't happened. We heard from the police department about that earlier. I think you need to take a hard look at the anticipated revenues for police because if they have in there that they're planning on getting tickets for parking on garbage day, I really fail to believe that's gonna come to fruition. So I question how much they have in their revenue budget. Um the other thing that just really concerned me, Mariana just said that she was gonna give the resumes to Plant Moran. I really don't want Plant Moran to decide who my city is gonna look at for a candidate for this position because they haven't proven themselves. That's up to you guys. I'm just saying how I feel about it. I would much rather Maddie look at the resumes um because he seems like he has a vision that is much more financially in tune with what we need. And then we're back to the grant writer and I know that council is the financial body, legislative body, that you can't make that position. It sure would make a difference in the budget. And again, I think it's because our mayor just wants to see our city fail. So uh maybe he won't come back from D C and that would be the best thing we could do for our city. I'm sorry that all of you have to do all of this um and deal with this, but in my opinion, you guys will not be doing your job if you approve this budget as it stands because we have a contractual obligation to Warren Valley to do that parking lot. And if the banquet center and the restaurant and coffee shop can't open because of that parking lot, there is no way we're ever gonna make revenue. And I know it's like a merry ground that we can't get off of. Um I'm glad it's your decision and not mine. Try and, try and have a good night.
Thank you so much, Sue. I appreciate that. We're gonna take it over to uh our treasurer, Lisa Explain. Are you speaking as a treasurer or are you speaking as a resident?
I'm speaking as the treasurer. Good evening, Honorable Council Chair, council members, as well as our residents who are joining tonight. Um first of all, I wanna say it's really exciting to hear some of the residents' comments and some of their suggestions. I think that is wonderful. We need to have that kind of engagement. We need to hear from them, we need to listen to them. You know, we do twice as much listening as we do talking, so I think it's really important to take those points. Um I do wanna echo what Rachel LaPointe said earlier in her comments, uh several things. In in particular, the budget to actual reporting. That um council, we used to meet monthly in a study session and reviewed them, budget actuals every single month. And it's something that I had suggested as a council member back in early twenty twelve, twenty thirteen. I will tell you, as treasurer, I still do that to this day. I review my budget to actual for my department every single month. You get, as council members, you get a report from me, reporting out why my budget actual is where it is percentage-wise and the overall health. I feel that department has, have, all do and and probably most of them do, I hope, um responsibility to review their budget to actuals. So they know where they are, where the percentage falls. If you're, you know, in at six-month mark, you know, you're not going over fifty percent. It's really that easy. You, when it comes to, so you can simplify it. That's what I'm trying to say. You don't have to be a finance expert for that. Simplify so you can know where you are. I will tell you, my concern as treasurer is that last week alone with check, the check run, and I communicated this with council members as well, a very large number of the checks that were drawn and issued were issued and drawn on exhausted general ledger funds. Uh account num- general ledger numbers, which violates the city charter section eight point nine. I think it's very important that we follow the budget that is approved by this honorable body adopted and that budget actual is going to help you. So please, um that's for everybody to take a look and review that monthly, in the very minimum. Um I do wanna also remind you real quick about the fund balance policy. I think I talk about this every single time. Uh quite frankly, I'm uncomfortable with this budget. And uh you do have a fiduciary responsibility. You all know that. You are very good at what you do and I appreciate you all. But that fund balance policy of eight percent on a sixty million dollar budget, you're looking at four point eight million. Uh we'd be in violation of that. So I'm very concerned about this. Um regarding the resident that came on and talked about involvement, I think that's great. I just wanna finish with a positive note. I encourage anybody who wants to be involved in their city government, do so. And that includes volunteering to serve on a commission. There are many vacancies on city commissions and I encourage you, no matter your age, you know, you can be twenty, you could be thirty, you could be forty, fifty, seventy, I just get involved in your city if you choose to. And if you have any questions, you can contact me in the treasurer's office. I'll be happy to assist and help you point you that direction. And I can be reached at three one three seven nine one three four one seven. Thank you, council chair, and thank you, council members, and thank you, administration.
Thank you so much. We have Ken next. How you doing, Ken? Please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street that you live on. You have five minutes. Let him unmute himself first, pause it. All right, Ken, I'm gonna, we're gonna try to walk you through this. I'm gonna lock me out from unmuting myself. I'm gonna try to unmute. So if you go, there should be the three little um dots on the right top right-hand corner. If you hit unmute, unmute my audio.
He was down on the bottom. He took his hand down.
Raise his hand back up. All right, thank you, Ken, for raising your hand back up. Click those three little dots in the top right-hand corner above your name. If you see above your name, you highlight in the top right-hand corner, you're gonna see three little dots and you're gonna hit unmute my audio. The host says allow you to participate in meetings. Okay, can you try to give me? For me? Try to do it for me so I can see what he's looking at. Okay. Oh, wow. Okay, so it should just pop up and it should say in blue, unmute or stay muted. The speakerphone on your phone's not gonna work.
Or she could just hold it.
If you want to, I guess. What is it? Yeah, try to give him a call and, Ken, we're gonna call you, well, what is it? Lori? Lori Mullin? Oh, 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 we're, okay. Uh, really? Lori, can you really? You don't know how to use that? What's going on there, Lori? Yeah. I think Chris is like the I T guy. Maybe we should send him to his house and like fix it. We're in no rush here at all, here's Lori. You do have to put on speakers so that we can hear everything. Lori, can you hear us?
Yes.
All right.
I I just wanted to say.
A little closer, hang on.
Can you hear me?
Hold on one second.
Okay, sorry about that. Uh every time I hit unmute, it wouldn't do it. I just wanted to say, I don't feel like this budget is realistic. I haven't had time to go in depth or over it, but just listening to things tonight, just one thing popped out right away, like when they were talking about the uniforms for the D P W. Um they didn't include boots, which are gonna be another fifteen grand. Um jackets, which would probably be another, be another three to five grand a year. And I'm sure there's many more things that aren't accounted for.
Lori, I want you to know that that Mahdi is waving his hand saying we did account for boots, we did account them.
Well, he stated that he just um accounted for the contract for the university.
I stated that, however, part of that was uh there's three departments, highway, uh building maintenance and water, which the university contract and the boots and the jackets are all uh split across.
Okay.
Yeah, it was my mistake, it was my mistake that I didn't actually go more in depth on.
Just boots alone is, for the D P W is like thirteen, fourteen thousand dollars. So how can fifteen thousand dollars be an adequate budget for uniforms and boots?
That's split across water, highway, and building maintenance.
So there's fifteen thousand in each one. So fifteen, thirty, forty-five thousand was actually budgeted. Hypothetically, that's roughly around there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, Lori. You can beat me up.
Oh, it's not just that. I just, you know, I just feel like it's too close for comfort, the whole budget.
Understood.
I do want you guys to know that Councilman uh Ahmad doesn't have cleave. You got, just all the county obligations, I'm not okay. Yeah, Lori, continue. Anything else?
Yeah, I finally unmuted.
Oh, you are?
I think so.
No.
Well, you're muted.
It's muted up there.
No, I'm on the phone still, though.
Any other questions?
Um no, I just, I do feel like you didn't give the residents enough time to look at the budget, the final budget. Um so I kinda agree with Rachel.
Well, unfortunately, we got the budget today also.
Yeah, we also, we just. We're not voting on it today, so. Yeah, we're not voting on it. This is our, this is our public hearing.
I can't, I can't hear you.
This is our, this is our public hearing. This is not, we're not voting.
No, 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 I understand that, but the public needs more time to express their concerns at the public hearing.
Yes, ma'am.
That's all.
Thank you.
For now. Thanks. Thank you so much.
All right. Anyone else on Zoom? Anyone else in the audience? I don't know. Next up, we're going to close the public hearing.
Council chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I moved that the Durban Heights City Council closed the public hearing at eight forty-seven P M.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please stay at eye. Was opposed. The ayes have it, motion carried. Next up, we have, might be, we have five B opening the public hearing to alleviating the public hearing board road between Berwin Street and Norborn Avenue.
Council chair.
Councilman Ahmad.
I moved that the Durban Heights City Council opened the public hearing at eight forty-seven P M for the purpose of hearing comments and or objections, if any, to the proposed alleviation of of for road between Berwin Street and Norborn Avenue, as outlined in five dash B.
Motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by uh Councilman Breyer. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please stay at eye. Was opposed. The ayes have it, motion carries. Uh we have public hearings regard regarding, anybody want to petition this? Anybody on Zoom? Seeing none. Anyone else? Anyone else? I wanna make this fair. Nobody? Okay. Next up, we have the. The public hearing.
I moved that the Durban Heights City Council closed the public hearing at eight forty-eight P M. Second.
All right, motion made by Councilman Ahmad, seconded by Councilman Saab. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please stay at eye. Was opposed. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, uh Council Chairman Beddles' resolution to revert the name of the summer festival, Back to Spirit Festival.
Council chair.
Yep, councilman.
I moved that the Durban Heights City Council adopt the following resolution to revert the name of the summer festival, Back to Spirit Festival. Whereas the city of Durban Heights has historically subordinated a festival known as the Spirit Festival, which has been a cherish to the community and whereas the festival was temporarily renamed Summer Festival through a decision that was prompted, has prompted community feedback, feedback and discussion regarding the significance of the original name and whereas following careful consideration and input from residents, as clear as the community prefers the name Spirit Festival to reflect on the values and spirit of our city and whereas any future changes to the festival's name might, must require the approval of my majority of the city council to ensure the community's voice is heard. Now therefore, let it be resolved at the city council of Durban Heights that one, the name of the festival shall be officially changed to Back to Spirit Festival. To all promotion material signage and communication will be updated to reflect this change. Three, any future proposal to change the name in the festival must be received by a majority of approval of the city council. Be further resolved that the resolution shall take effect immediately upon adoption as outlined in eleven A.
Support, motion made by Councilman Saab, seconded by Councilman Ahmad. Any discussion? I would like to talk a little bit about this. I think this has been a a pretty hot topic in the community. I think the summer. I think the summer fest is a great name, but I think traditionally, we've always been the spirit festival. I spoke with the, um, Parks and Recreation Director, and he's kinda like, hey, get this out here quick, so that I can start creating our flyers and our banners, and we can go back to being the spirit festival. I mean, till this day, I think almost anybody that talks about the festival calls it the spirit festival. And so I think this was very important, and, and I'm glad that, uh, you know, we brought some attention to this, and I hope this passes tonight. Any other discussion?
Council Chair.
Yes, sir. Councilman, uh, Council. Quickly, one of the things that happened is, they couldn't get the ride company to come close to the Fourth of July. Like this year, it's, I'm just looking, it's June seventh through the eleventh. So that was one of the reasons for the change, but I agree, it was called the Spirit Festival, it's like the Livonia Spree. It's, it, it should be known as the Spirit Festival. Anything else? Thank you, Councilman, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor to go back to being the Spirit Festival, please stay at eye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The eyes have it, congratulations, we're back to the Spirit Festival. Next up, we have new business, none, members of the public. I'm sorry. Uh, Councilman, Councilman.
Council Chair. Um, in regards to the mayor being out of the country, I recently addressed this with some people. Um, our charter addresses the protocol that when the mayor is not able to attend to the city because they are out of state or country, Council Chair takes over the role of mayor. When Placko was unable to perform his duties, I, as Council Chair at the time, took over. When Ken Baron was Council Chair, he also took over when Placko was out of town. The chief of staff is not elected by the residents, and we owe the residents respect of Council Chair taken over when the mayor is absent. This is because if there's an emergency that needs a split-second decision, we need someone in the city on-site to access the situation in person, um, to make sure they make the right decision. Not just, you know, play the telephone game where, you know, he said, she said, and you're telling them what you're seeing, but you really need to be there in person. So our residents deserve this, and that's all I've got to say.
Thank you so much. Any other comments from Councilmen?
Council Chair, I just wanna wish all the mothers out there, I know it's Mother's Day, it's coming Sunday, so Happy Mother's Day, especially to the mothers in our great city. Uh, my mo- my mother, my own mother, my wife, and of course, my mother-in-law, just to be on the safe side. And I won't be in trouble, so Happy Mother's Day, everyone.
Anyone else? I will say also, just since Councilman, uh, Ahmad put it out there, and I almost forgot. Uh, Happy Mother's Day to all the beautiful, amazing mothers in our community. Uh, we have, you know, some of the greatest mothers in this community, including my wife, my mother, um. And, and my mother-in-law. My mother-in-law is actually amazing, she comes over almost every day, hops out with the kids, helps my wife out a lot. She's an amazing mother, so is my mother, so I don't, my mother's like, why, is it my name? And to my beautiful sisters and, and so many mothers in here, to all the mothers here as well that are in attendance, and the ones that also work with us, uh, and to the elected ones. I also want to, uh, tell Mariana, with nothing personal, when we go over the budget, it's budget season, it's heated. I feel like, kinda like a lot of the people, this is a balloon, it's not real. Feel like these numbers are truly inflated, like we really inflated these numbers to try to figure out the spending. We're gonna have to figure some, some of this, uh, uh, budget out. I know these are great, Plant Moran gave us some opinions, but I think that's ultimately, uh, uh, you know, not the best decision here. I think we need to figure some things out. Anyone else?
Council Chair.
Yep. Yeah, I too, just wanna wish everyone a happy and blessed Mother's Day, and have everyone remember to honor their mother and all our mothers' raising families. Thank you. Anyone else? Uh, next up, a good announcements.
Yep.
Okay. I just wanna let everybody know that this month, uh, May twenty-second is gonna be the South Dillon Heights Civic Association meeting, it comes a little earlier. We have Erin Verne's coming from the House of Representatives there, and we also will have someone from Sri's office if he does not uh, be able to attend himself, that's at seven o'clock, three, three, Congressman, yes. Uh, three, three, six, five, three, 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 five, South Beach Daily, I don't even know that one forever. Uh, and that's seven o'clock. And then the Ekor's Creek meeting will be on the twenty-eighth, which is a Wednesday, at six o'clock at the same location. It is anticipated at this point that in June, our meeting will be centered around our mayoral candidates, and we will interview all. So, we figured we better do it, you know, before July.
Thank you, any other announcements?
Can I make a TMA announcement?
Yes.
Okay. So, for Thrive By Any Means Necessary, which is a nonprofit that kind of, um, worked in collaboration a lot with the CCRC Commission, um, we have our second annual Our Children's Legacy Brunch this weekend, Leslie asked me to come in, make sure everybody knew about this. Um, the brunch and the celebration honors, um, a few families in the community that have lost a child in some instance, um, and gives them a chance to share their story and how they're gonna make their child's legacy come to life in the city. Um, so this year, we'll have, hopefully, our three honorees from last year come back and give us an update on their projects, and then we'll have three new honorees, um, of which I'm one, I'm gonna be discussing my sister Celeste, who would have been twenty this year. Um, and I'm gonna be discussing sibling grief and how siblings sometimes kinda get left out of things. Um, I'm really excited to share Celeste's story with everybody. Um, I know the other families are really, it, it, you're excited, but you're not, so it's, it's a lot. So it's this weekend, May tenth, um, from eleven to two at OW Best Middle School. Tickets are twenty-five dollars, and then they will be available at the door, and we're really excited to see everybody, there'll be a whole brunch. I'm really excited about the food, it sounds like it's gonna be a great menu, we'll have a good time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yeah, I'll send, I'll send you guys the flyer.
Thank you. All right. Uh, next up is gonna be public comments. I'll take it over to Zoom first, anyone on Zoom that has any public comments? Seeing none, I'll take it over to in-person, public comments. All right, seeing none.
Council Chair, motion to adjourn?
No, hold on, one second.
I thought you were messing up.
I'm afraid, so I'm gonna go home.
How you doing, ma'am?
Renee, Dillon Heights, Annapolis.
You got three minutes.
I only three minutes, I just wanna say thank you for this, this session today. I know you guys work a lot, there's been a lot of study sessions, I mean, it, it's a lot to come here Tuesdays, and then early Tuesdays, and then every Tuesday, and I understand that's a lot on you guys, because for me to try to come here, you know, I missed a couple because I had to be away, but phew, just to talk myself into coming back to a meeting, it's just like, do I really wanna stay here another three, three hours? I just really appreciate you guys, the work that you guys do, I know that you're really concerned about the city and that you love the city and you live here. And, um, I think renaming it the Spirit Fest is on the right track, and I, and I'm really looking forward to see what's gonna happen in Dillon Heights.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience?
Motion to adjourn.
I'm gonna motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Councilwoman, seconded by Councilman Saab, all in favor, please stay at eye. Those opposed? The eyes have it, motion carries. Thank you so much, and have an amazing day, Happy Mother's Day.